All right, I'm gonna give you all a one-minute warning because we do have a quorum and it is one minute after seven, so we're gonna start in just a minute. Okay, noting the hour and the presence of a quorum, I will call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order, welcome everybody, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting online may do so on ACTON TV's YouTube channel, found at the top of our agenda. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on ACTON TV's website at actontv.org. Welcome, I'm glad to see so many people here, it is gonna be another long evening reviewing our budget, this is the second presentation of our budget, I would say though that this is part one of a lot of the subsequent information and delivery of clarification for a lot of questions that we got from the community, the second part will be on our Budget Saturday Workshop, which is Saturday, February 10th, at 8:30 a.m. in this room, the committee will be here, members of the public are welcome, it's also a time for our finance committees and select board members to get a full view of the budget, and during that meeting we'll be talking about additional cost centers for the district, but also having a much awaited conversation about some of the structural changes that we can take to help make our budget more sustainable in the future, so stay tuned for that, that Saturday Budget Workshop will also be broadcast on ACTON TV at the same time, so thanks to ACTON TV for signing up for that. I also want to apologize for the last-minute postponement of the Community Coffee, as you'll hear later on, as the evening gets longer, someone was not feeling well, but we have been able to reschedule that, so February, I need to look at a calendar just to keep myself honest, no, see, it's February 12th, February 12th, Monday, February 12th, at 7:00 p.m., we'll send out another reminder, Peter and I will be hosting a Community Coffee online via Zoom for the community. And then lastly, in my welcome, you'll see in the FYI section at the bottom of our agenda that the election calendars for both ACTON and Boxborough are posted, so this is the time of the year where we look to the committee members whose terms are expiring and see if they're have, what their intentions are for next year, if they've thought about that, so there are three of us whose terms expire this year, myself, Ben, and Andrew, and I'm happy to share that I'll be seeking reelection for a third term, Andrew?
I am also pleased to continue the fun and am seeking reelection.
Excellent, Ben?
And likewise, I'll be seeking reelection for my second term.
Excellent, thank you all. Just because we have incumbents running doesn't mean that no one else is welcome to run, you'll see on our FYI the dates posted for when you need to pull papers by, have them back to the two town halls, and when the town election is. Okay, moving on, ACTON-Boxborough Student Representative Update, welcome to our student reps, I see a couple of you here, they report monthly at our meetings, here's some student perspective of things happening at the high school and the district as in general, and this is per our policy JIB, so who wishes to come up first? Hi, Dixha. It's on the top, little switch you need to flip up, we've got seven tech people here who will help. Excellent. But it's still not on.
Okay, thank you, hi everyone, I'm Dixha Mathre, and I am a sophomore at AB High School, tonight I would like to make a few comments regarding both Budget A and Budget B on the students' behalf, in terms of Budget A, a lot of students are in favor of it because there are less staff cuts, and the curriculum and other extracurricular activities aren't affected as much as they are in Budget B, and in terms of Budget B, a lot of students are opposed to this budget plan because of the staff cuts and the effects on curriculum, extracurricular activities, and specifically the mental health curriculum and resources, and I did a poll on my Instagram story a few days ago to kind of get an idea of where the school stands on the budget, and so Budget A, 65% is in favor of Budget A, these aren't, these aren't the most accurate stats, this isn't the whole school population, but 65% of the votes posted were in favor of Budget A, 10% were in favor of Budget B, and 25 were in favor of an override, and so I just wanted to let you know that this is how the school in general feels about the upcoming budget cuts, I would also like to quickly mention the snow days, in like the past few weeks, it's been snowy, the roads have been icy and hazardous, and I received several student complaints about road safety and how some days didn't have a delay, which was disadvantageous to students who were driving to school, and several students came to me and told me that they almost ran into an accident while driving to school or while driving back home, and I just wanted to talk to you about this concern from the school, that we have to kind of weigh in the safety of student drivers as well, and so that's my update for tonight, thank you.
Thanks Dixha. Hi Molly.
Hi, I'm Molly, I'm a junior, my thing kind of goes along with the budget, but not completely, I wanna just vouch for my elective that I took last semester, PoliSci, I know that there's been talk of getting rid of electives, or like lowering the funds for them, and I don't know exactly what's going on, but I just wanna say that PoliSci was definitely the best class I've ever taken at the high school, I've wanted to major in PoliSci ever since I was in 7th grade, so I've been waiting to take this class for like as long as I could, and it was just so great for me to take this class, and it was just something I looked forward to every day, and I think it's really important that people get exposed to that, and I think especially in a class like PoliSci, it's important that we like educate the students and make sure they know what's going on in the world, and I think PoliSci was very helpful for me in doing that, because I was definitely more aware of current events, so.
Thank you. Any other student updates? All right, thank you. Now comes the time in the meeting where we have public participation, I see a lot of faces in here, and several are new, so I just wanted to remind everybody of the change in procedure that we put in place towards the beginning of this year, so all comments, regardless of whether or not they are on or not on the agenda, are heard during this time at our public participation time in the meeting, big question is why, there were a number of reasons here, first of all, as we state in our policy, the committee doesn't typically respond to public participation, because some of those items that the community brings may not be on our agenda, and we can only discuss the items that are on our agenda and deliberate on those, in the past, if there was an item on the school committee agenda, the school committee would actually receive that report, presentation, whatever it would be, they would discuss it, and then the public would have a chance to make their comments or ask questions, switching this around gives the public an opportunity to give the additional, additional input to the committee before they deliberate, ask questions of the presenters before those presentations happen, I will say that we've made a concerted effort this year to have memos available as part of our packet in advance of the presentations when the agendas are posted, this allows everyone to come prepared with questions, and to ask them prior to addressing, ask them prior to them being addressed during the presentation, and like I said, it's more possible for us as a committee to consider the public participation, the public comments and questions, if we get them before we deliberate on the items that are presented. I will say that recognizing the importance of our budget topics, and the fact that a lot of this information is coming quickly as the, as the district pivots based on the feedback that they're getting, we have added a specific agenda item for tonight's meeting that allows for public comments during that budget presentation, and I'll also mention that for anybody here who's in the audience who maybe didn't get a chance or doesn't have a device with them, we have copies of tonight's budget presentation on the table over there, so feel free to take those, so that you can look at those, make notes, refer to them during that public participation time, we do want to make sure that the public's input is heard as we discuss and deliberate the budget. So, with that being said, we typically allocate 20 minutes to public participation, and try to hold each person presenting to about three minutes, and looking at the size of the audience tonight, we'll keep three minutes, but we'll, we're gonna keep to the 20-minute part as well, so give me just a second to start some timers, is there anybody from the public who wishes to make a comment to the committee? Hi Gary.
Hello, sorry to be back again, I'm gonna have to start off with my typical guideline, from a finance committee standpoint, it doesn't quite work, I do review the presentations and the slides ahead of time, but when you get into the discussion and hearing you folks talk about these items, I come up with questions in my mind that I didn't think of before, and it really hinders my ability to ask you questions, so I'd like to have you reconsider your, not policy, your guideline?
Procedure.
Procedure, thank you, Adam's been very careful to tell me many times it's not a policy, anyway, so that's my general comment, now I have to get into the emotional part of the statement, I hear a lot of you talk about the fact that if ACTON supports the override, and the ACTON Town Meeting supports the budget, well, we're done, some of you seem to forget there's two towns in this region, while Boxborough doesn't need an override this year, we didn't think we did, we're now beyond our levy limit given the current budget, we've supported the schools historically, we supported the Boardwalk Campus in a high majority, if not unanimous, but the problem we have is that we have a high population of citizens with fixed incomes, we are concerned that the population within Boxborough cannot support a total increase of 15.69%, or two, just over $2 million. We've already started looking at moving out capital items, Adam made a good point that, you know, Boxborough's been talking level service, you're actually cutting, we're looking to cut, but we can't cut people because we don't, we don't have enough, any people to cut, so this current budget does exceed our levy limit, we're gonna have to use a lot of our free cash, maybe stabilization funds, but even if we make it through this year, we don't know where we're gonna be the next two years, it's, so one of the things I need to ask is we need, I need at least a next two-year understanding of where the budget's going, I know we have contracts, so we can at least, no, we're only asking for a total of three years, because we know the contracts only last three years, but we really need to understand, are we gonna hit with another $9 million override next year, or a $1 million increase next year, or are we just back to $3 million? FinCom has not made a recommendation yet, and we won't until after the, you know, the budget is voted by, by you folks, but I need to make sure you hear our concerns, I really believe Boxborough's town meeting's gonna be emotional, if Budget A passes, it's forcing people to leave town.
20 seconds.
So, I just wanna make sure that you heard that while Boxborough does support the schools, it's, it's an issue for us, thank you.
Thanks Gary.
Hello, I'm Jeffrey, and I'm a junior at the high school, and I'm here as a member of Resource Force, a student-led environmental team at the high school, and I'm here in support of the resolution, so several months ago, we sent a resolution on decarbonization to the school committee, and the school district has one of the largest carbon footprints in our town, releasing 12,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent, according to ACTON's 2017 greenhouse gas inventory, which is far more than any other public sector, and also because the school district is one of the most visible parts of our community, we should set an example, we also once again want to acknowledge the current budget crisis, and the many challenges that both the committee and the district faces in the upcoming months, and we want to reiterate that our resolution does not require any immediate capital investment, and instead, the investment is spread over a period of 20 years, also given the unprecedented level of federal funding currently available, and the significant threat that climate change poses to our community, we hope that the committee will take advantage of the federal funding and act now to help stop climate change.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, for the folks watching at home, my name is Mike Balulescu, I'm an ACTON resident, Miriam parent, and president of the ABEA, our district's teachers' union, as everyone will likely hear this evening, the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and this school committee are close to finalizing a consensus override plan for this spring that funds the A budget presented two weeks ago, given the fiscal crisis facing our schools, and given the Finance Committee's initial hesitancy around the override number for FY '25, this is undoubtedly good news, as a taxpayer who believes in our incredible teachers, and believes in strong public schools, I look forward to working together with like-minded citizens to help pass an override that preserves much, if not all, of what our educators need to be successful. However, I'm here tonight to remind you, the school committee, as you know, that your budgeting work is not done, even in the A budget, there are painful cuts proposed that would be terrible for our children and our community, if an override passes, we are still on track to lose classroom teachers, a librarian, a digital literacy coach, a curriculum coordinator, a counselor, and other vital support staff that help our schools function, and serve the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students, as you continue your important work over the next month to finalize a budget that fits under the top-line number approved by the ACTON Leadership Group, I encourage you to be bold and creative to find ways to preserve as many staff positions as possible, for example, if we returned to a two-tier busing system, one of the structural changes proposed by Peter Light, and one that is feasible to implement next year, could we save enough to restore many of the positions we're slated to lose, I share this as but one example of ideas within your power and within your reach to make sure that a successful override truly preserves what our students and our staff need to be successful, I know that this final stretch of the budget process is particularly taxing, and I thank you for your service to our teachers and our children, and please continue to think creatively and strategically about how we can make sure that the A budget holds on to as many talented, valuable, and vital educators as possible, thank you.
Thanks Mike.
Hello, I'm Caitlin Sullivan Fieldman, I am a Miriam parent and an educator with 20 years of experience, I'm currently a school director and a first-year PhD student at Leslie University, the focus of my doctoral work will be in examining the connections between school systems, teacher satisfaction, and that, and student outcomes, we know that the best teachers want to work in the best school systems, and that the best school systems support teachers, families and teachers alike come to ACTON for our schools, when I first toured the ACTON schools for kindergarten, I was amazed at the quality, the work that I saw, the projects and the studies at Miriam mirrored the fancy private schools that I was familiar with from New York, now at the end of our Miriam journey, our children are in 6th grade, the work I've seen, sorry, I can affirm that our children have received an education equivalent or even superior to those famous-name schools, I am incredibly fearful for the fate of Miriam and all the ACTON schools if the budget override were to fail, I currently work in Newton, and have a front-row seat to the consequences of a failed override, the strength of Newton schools is fracturing, and families and children are suffering, I don't want to see ACTON face similar consequences, even when the strike ends, good teachers will leave Newton, it's up to us to save our schools, in recent years, we've seen the slow squeeze on schools, and increased pressure on teachers as budgets cuts limit resources, we're playing a risky game, threatening to destabilize an entire community, gambling with the generation of student success, rather than choosing to manage change responsibly, I call on this committee to pass the A budget, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Carey, and I'm going to support the A budget as well, and just, I wanted to share two kind of personal stories that shaped my opinion of it, my kids are both through the school system and living, well, they both live in Florida now, so they have nothing to do with the ACTON schools anymore, but we moved here for the schools, we went to Douglas School during the time when there were modulators all over the lawn, and kind of a mess at the school, if you remember that, but we loved the school because we loved the teachers, and we loved the philosophy of the administration that was there, and that's, to my mind, what makes a school work, is the people that are there to teach the kids, everything else is details, so I hope you're trading off a lot of details to try to keep your teachers and staff together, the second story I wanted to relate, just, I was in Heathrow Airport around 2001, sitting waiting for my flight home, and overheard a conversation, this is in London, between three people talking about how great the ACTON School District schools were, and when I heard that, I thought, they must mean ACTON just outside of London, but no, they were talking about Massachusetts, and comparing our schools to the private schools local to it, and to other schools around it, so hey, international fame is not a bad thing, we plan to stay in ACTON, we plan to support the override, and we hope that the present, or the present-level Plan A, Budget A passes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Stellicoe, Guesswood Road, I support a present-level funded override for our school and town, or maximally funded, we've been fortunate for many years to not have to do this, and we've benefited, benefited greatly from the excellent school system and town services that we have available to us, for me, this is the best investment we can make for our future, investing in our town and schools, education helps our children develop their creativity, collaborative skills, develop critical and free-thinking, and I think we can all agree that the world needs more individuals with insightful perspectives, the best value I can add to my home is to invest in my schools and my town, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Corinne Hogseth, Seminole Road, so I was confused about why everybody's talking about budget now, when you said you wanted budget during the budget discussion, so I'll make some of my comments now, from what I've seen from previous presentations, the devastating cuts everybody's talking about, the crippling of the school system by eliminating positions would bring the K through 6 classroom sizes back to exactly what they were when my kids were at Douglas, so it's hard to see how much, how, how that could be devastating, it wasn't devastating for my kids when they had 23 kids in their first or second-grade class, the A budget in my mind doesn't really require any trade-offs, so yeah, I'd like to see trade-offs, I'd like to see, you know, get rid of the, you know, fix the transportation thing and keep the teachers, but that, we could also, you know, the teachers could choose to go into the GIC and save $5.9 million, or close to it, which is nearly the amount of the override, I feel like the structural changes you've been talking about, whether it's open enrollment, GIC, closing CONIT, whatever, these are changes that we should be looking for before we ask for a gigantic override, because once the override passes, there will be no incentive to go and get those savings, and if they, we do realize any savings, the taxpayers will never benefit from them, instead, that money will be used to continue to pursue unpopular initiatives. Oh, so yeah, there's one other thing I heard, this is, I heard this, this evening, I heard there's already some backroom discussion about another override next year, even if this one passes, I hope you can put that to rest, thank you.
Thanks Corinne, any other members of the public, this is time, you can speak about any topic, the budget one, at the end of the budget presentation would be specifically for budget, so you wanna speak about budget now, that's your prerogative as well. All right, seeing none, thank you all, Peter, do we have a superintendent's update?
I'm gonna skip the longer superintendent's update, and we'll send that out to our listserv tomorrow, but I just wanna highlight, we had a fantastic event here yesterday, and I wanna highlight, you know, the work that the Resource Center has done, as well as Jen Faber, who's in the audience tonight, through the amazing generosity of, you know, citizens from ACTON and Boxborough, the Resource Center has been collecting both adult and child clothing over the course of the fall, and yesterday, they held a clothing giveaway, so we had 138 families show up to the clothing giveaway in a single day, which was estimated to be, you know, somewhere around 200 children served among those 138 families, most of them had never been to the Resource Center before, about a quarter of them actually had, which is fantastic that we have returned customers, about 70% of the people who came were from ACTON and Boxborough, but we also had people from the surrounding communities also come, because they heard about the Resource Center on Facebook, and also a couple people from even as far away as Worcester and Lowell, so, you know, this was all donated by the citizens, so it's great to be able to give back to families in need, not only in our community, but in the area, you know, just really huge shout-out, that, to be able to put on an event of that caliber with that short of a runway, from the time they started this fall to now, is just a tremendous impact, and I just wanna thank that group for all of the work they did to make that happen, because there, there was certainly a lot behind the scenes, so congratulations.
Excellent, thank you, and thanks to everyone who's volunteering and helping to support the Resource Center, ongoing business for us is, first is our health insurance update, so I think we've got a bit of mixed information here, I know the Health Insurance Trust met, Andrew, are you giving us an update on the Health Insurance Trust meeting?
Let me give you a Health Insurance Trust update, and Peter, I know you were part of the working group, and I'll hand over, excuse me, to you, so the trust met on January 25th, and the focus was on the review provided by Gallagher for potential replacement health insurance providers, additionally, we received reports regarding our most recent audit report and December cash flow, the documentation for all of that is available at the Health Insurance Trust document sharepoint available through the acton.com or .gov website, our unrestricted net position fell to a negative 372,000 at year-end June 30th, it was driven by claims towards the end of the year, although some of those have subsequently been recovered, our cash position fell Our cash position fell lower than results. We had a better loss in '23 than '22, but we still had a $1.5 million loss in 2023. Our subsequent events, we spoke with our auditor, and the trust, because the trust had asked for and received $2 million in advance to the school and the town, there was no qualification on our statements. The auditor gave us a clean bill of health and said that the advance shows a commitment to keep the trust solvent. A vote to accept the audit was tabled until next meeting to allow for additional review of the documentation. Our December cash flow was similar between October and November, close to break-even in the quarter, and we're pleased that this, please note that this time last year, we were also at break-even. Our FY '24 claims are up 19.1% in revenue versus expenses, as you probably understand, is 123.6% over. We have a deficit or had a deficit of $2.2 million. But the discussion of alternative methods of providing health insurance provided the bulk of what we were talking about. The trust and its consultants have looked at multiple steps, multiple next steps, rather, and a comment on this in reply to Corinne's, some of your questions earlier, and to allay any confusion. We're looking at bringing the entirety of the population that's covered by the district into a new non-self-insured arrangement. As with health insurance you have through your employer, our members pay their share. They have their deductibles, and the district pays its share. The potential to moving to a new system is what we're looking at. This is not a question of individual choice. For the history of the district, the Health Insurance Trust was enough to insure our employees and retirees, but the risk pool currently is too small for the trust to consider as it was. And so now we're looking. Each of the replacements have positives and negatives. We can, as an option, remain self-funded. We can move to the Group Insurance Commission, the GIC, which seems to be a good replacement, but it does not include Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we cannot accept until later in the year. The Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, known as MIA, could be a total replacement of all plans, and the move would be in July or next January. It does not cover Harvard Pilgrim and does demand a two-year commitment. We could self-fund through Blue Cross Blue Shield, which while competitive, still puts us in the same position we're in now of managing a small risk. Harvard Pilgrim would not be able to offer us a competitive bid to take over for what we're doing. Massachusetts Strategic Health Group is also not advantageous to us. The Mayflower Municipal Health Group, or MMHG, is not competitive, and the West Suburban Health Group is not accepting new membership. The Health Insurance Working Group met on Tuesday, January 30th, to review and consider the comparison, and please note that even with the HIWG, Health Insurance Work Group, the trust and the Health Insurance Work Group are not making the full decision. It's a complex situation, and how we navigate it will need to be defined. The town and the schools may end up making different decisions. Finally, the trust voted to agree to a memorandum of agreement regarding the advance of the trust from the district, and the next Health Insurance Working Group meeting is February 13th. The next Health Insurance Trust meeting will be March 1st. With this, I hand over to you, Peter, to talk about some of the stuff you've been talking about.
Sure, I can talk a little, and Andrew, maybe if you want to jump in, feel free with some details as well. It's really hard when the two of you sit in a line, because I, if I look that way and say, hey, Andrew, it's, you know, it's really unclear. So, as Andrew just said, you know, I think we're in a really complex situation right now, because I think what what we're seeing is, the Health Insurance Trust as it exists is too small of a risk pool. And it performed exceedingly well over a long period of time, but there seems to have been a change in healthcare, and our consultants have shared this with us, as, you know, Steve Noon has shared it with us, where, you know, there are changes happening in healthcare particularly around prescription drug availability and the expenses associated with that that are probably going to shift a little bit of the industry for a period of time. And one of the important elements of what we try to do now is make sure that we don't end up in the same position in the future. And managing risk, I think, is going to be a really important element of that. So, you know, my personal opinion at this point is, we need to try and work toward, move away from the Acton Health Insurance Trust into a larger entity that takes the risk away from the town and from the schools. You know, to that end, as Andrew said, we've explored multiple different options, for a variety of reasons, including the absence of cost-saving mechanisms. There really appear to be two good viable paths ahead of us. One is through MIA, and you can see from the slides that were shared at the last Acton Health Insurance Trust meeting, that a move to MIA would save the entirety of the trust about $1.2 million per year. That MIA document is an actual quote based on analysis of the current members of the trust. So they actually looked at our entire risk pool, they sent it to their underwriters, and that was a real quote from MIA, effective if we choose to move to MIA as of July 1st of this year. The other option, GIC, has not yet published its health insurance rates. And so our consultants for the trust did projections based on a current analysis of our subscribers today and what it would cost if we moved to the GIC plans, and they assumed a 5.1% increase in rates over the current year based on their analysis of the last year. Now, you know, we've asked them to go back to the table on that, because we've gotten some information from the attorney that we actually just brought on board to consult with around health insurance, that they believe GIC may actually have a higher interest, not an interest rate increase, a higher rate increase than 5.1%. So we've actually asked them to go back and estimate it at 5, uh, 9.7%, which it might be. You know, my rough calculation is that would probably bring down the savings by $1 million, but instead of $5.9 million a year, it's probably still in the magnitude of a $5 million savings per year. I think it's important to note, from a school committee perspective, that that entire savings is not the school committee's savings or the district's savings. You know, we represent about 78% of the overall trust, and so, you know, 78% of the savings could roughly be calculated as school district, and the remaining would be a portion to the town. And then similarly, the savings happens for the district, and that level of savings happens for all of the employees in the trust. So that is, you know, certainly a significant consideration. You know, I, it's, I think it's too early to project exactly what the number would end up being for the district budget and for employees, but we have asked the consultant to go back and actually do an analysis of the 9.7% rate increase of what exactly that means for the school district and what it would mean for our different employees. At the same time, I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, we want to be considerate of is knowing that, I think it's about 2/3 of our current subscribers take Blue Cross Blue Shield, and about 1/3 take Harvard Pilgrim. MIA only offers Blue Cross Blue Shield plans, so we're going to have a portion of our subscribers disappointed that they wouldn't continue their Harvard Pilgrim coverage. And then similarly, the GIC offers only Harvard Pilgrim or Unicare, thank you, options, which even though they're widely accepted, are not Blue Cross Blue Shield. And so in that situation, we're going to have a portion of employees disappointed that we wouldn't be offering the same plan that they currently have today. So there's still a lot of work and dialogue and education that needs to go into that as we finalize a decision. You know, certainly from a district finance standpoint, the GIC is a really enticing opportunity, and we need to certainly take that seriously, but we need to evaluate both of the systems. It actually requires digging down and making sure that people would continue to be covered in the ways that they expect to be covered. We need to dig into the nuances of the different plans, and, you know, that's not to say we're not working on it, I'm just saying that there's a lot that we need to consider in consultation with all of our employees along the way as well. So that's the update. It, you know, I will say, you know, from a timeline standpoint, MIA, that quote is good if we go in as of July 1st. What that means, though, is, in both MIA and GIC, you have to bring your retirees along with you when you go in. The Health Insurance Trust, in the last few months, just recently voted, as of January 1st this year, to put its retirees on Aetna plans, which are fully insured plans. Those plans aren't up again until January 1st. So MIA has given us a runway, though, of six months, where if we bring most of the district in, our active plans can transfer over as of July 1st, and then the retirees would have to transfer over as of January 1st of the following year. In terms of GIC, there's no runway right now to be able to enter GIC as of July 1st. The only runway to enter GIC is going to be on January 1st of 2025. That means that some form of the trust, if we go to GIC, would have to continue to exist, or we'd have to be able to provide health insurance in the interim between now and January 1st. It also means that whatever savings we think we see would only be about half a year worth of that level of savings, and the other half would be at the higher rate of the 22.8% increase that we're currently carrying for HIT. An additional consideration in terms of either path that we pursue is that we're going to have to have a runout period for existing claims within the trust, which means that we're going to have to really be thoughtful and have good projections from our consultants around what we're going to have to carry for budget numbers. So, you know, I think the the great news from a long-term planning perspective is we have two viable paths that save in the millions of dollars, and that's a really good, strong positive. The challenge is, there's, I don't see a path currently where we're going to see a huge savings from that in FY '25. So I don't think those savings are going to help us for FY '25. However, I do think that those savings can come into play and reduce the base of the budget in subsequent years beyond FY '25. So FY '26, '27, '28. Obviously, if you lower the base once, it stays at that level lower. So we're continuing to evaluate this. You know, I think, you know, it was a really important move from the school committee to have extended to all of our employees that first six months of of coverage of the employee share of rate increases in exchange for coming back to the table and bargaining in good faith about this. That certainly is playing out the way we had hoped it to. It's a challenging situation for everyone. We know that, you know, providing good healthcare is one of the ways that we continue to attract and retain the best teachers in our schools, which is what we want to have for our kids. We want to continue to do that. We want to be thoughtful about whatever the transition looks like ahead, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and hopefully that was a reasonable summary. Andrew, is there anything you would add?
Yeah, I just want to add a couple more details about the GIC option. I think at its foundation, and Peter, you said it, well, you know, Corinne, to your point, I don't disagree at all, and I think we do view GIC as something that we have to take seriously. I wouldn't, at this point, juxtapose that to other funding models for next year specifically, for all the reasons that Peter mentioned. It would only be for half a year at the at the most. It's 75% of 75%, and then we still have to have the six-month-plus runway for our current trust. But two other things just to keep in mind, I still think the fact that it's not self-funded is is a good thing. However, one, in the GIC model, you cannot do a different rate split for different categories of employees, meaning, right now, our retirees who are not Medicare-eligible, we charge 50% and 50%. And active employees own 25% of the premiums. We would have to change to paying 75% of non-Medicare-eligible retirees' health insurance to 75%. So we need to take that number of retirees under 65 and increase our liability in terms of their premium, so we have to factor that in. Secondly, those assumptions or the predictions around the 5.9 million were also based on their assumptions of what plans people who currently take X would take in the GIC. There are some plan options that are more expensive, and they could choose to take that. Now, some might say, why would they choose that? It's because in our options right now, we do have high deductible plans. GIC does not have high deductible plans, and also it means that people who have HSAs are not allowed to have HSAs. I mean, they keep their current HSAs, but they can't contribute to, continue to contribute to HSA. So there's a lot of assumptions baked in. I say that not to contest the larger theme of GIC is something that we seriously have to consider for long-term savings, because I do think what it offers us is, we have to look at that very seriously. But in terms of short-term gains, I do think, I wouldn't juxtapose it for next year, but I would argue that from a foundation, from those, from those sustainability topics that people have talked about for the long term, I think GIC is something that we want to take seriously. So I just want to add those things. And it's a three-year commitment for GIC.
And two years for MIA.
Two years for MIA.
Yep.
Yeah, the other thing Adam asked me to just mention, we have scheduled Russell Dupere, who is the attorney that we brought on board at the last meeting, to consult around health insurance. He is actually going to come to our open session at the next meeting on February 15th.
Thanks. Ginny, did you have a question?
Yeah, just really quickly, when is GIC going to set the rate increase, and where did you get the 9-point whatever?
Ginny, it's going to be first week in March. I just wrote to the representative today. He said first week in March.
Okay, great, thank you.
First week in March. You know, Attorney Dupere actually had had conversations with a number of consultants that had shared with them they were hearing that it was going to be 9.7%. I feel like at least going with the upper number is a safer projection.
Other questions? Vikram?
Well, excuse me. Have you asked the unions what their thoughts are on this? Have they been provided enough data to make any sort of like reasonable, you know, fielding in which direction they'd want to take? And also, are there any ideas of how we might bridge that gap? If it's not till January 1st, I mean, do we know what that cost would be, or how we would actually do that for for those six months that we'd have to carry?
So, you know, two points. One, absolutely, we're working directly with all three of our unions, and the town is also working with, I believe it's five of its employee unions. We also have representatives of retirees at the table as well for all of these discussions. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're including people around the table and making good decisions with a lot of input here. In in terms of the second one, you know, what we know right now is, for continuing Acton Health Insurance Trust for six more months, we know the rate increase is 22.8%, which is what we're currently carrying in the budget. There's no other structure that we've seen that could reduce that impact over that period of time. I think the the greater piece, and and I think, you know, Attorney Dupere is going to be able to talk about this as well next time, is thinking about what's the cost of covering the runout period going to look like? And one of the wonders that I have is, would the trust have made sufficient revenue back between now and January 1st of next year to use what we've already contributed in that $1.5 million of district funds as the loan, to be able to use that amount to pay off the runoff so that there's no additional impact in terms of the operating budget? I don't know the answer to that yet. It's a wonder I have, and certainly something we'll explore.
Let me just see if anyone else has questions. We'll come back to you. Anyone else have questions? Thanks, Vikram.
I was just going to say, I think, given the choice, I think people would prefer to have their health insurance shift a little bit than be laid off.
I have one quick question, and I'm going to actually point it over this way. So Andrew, you mentioned with GIC, our coverage, our share of coverage for retirees goes up to match. And so then my question is maybe to Sheri, which is, does that then change the calculation on our unfunded liability in the OPEB trust, because we actually have to carry a higher number for retiree costs? I'm getting into the weeds here.
Yeah, we haven't got, yeah, hadn't gotten that far yet. That's a great question.
All right, something to consider, because, you know, as we know, we we took a disbursement from our OPEB trust to help pay off this problem, and while I'm still in favor of the GIC, I think that that's another component that we'll have to think about.
Yeah, that's a detail.
Because I don't want to say, oh, and by the way, we have less in the trust, and now we're, you know, stretching it out till '23, '24, you know, 100 years before we're fully funded or whatever it may be. So just something to consider as as part of the calculus there.
Right.
Thanks. All right, any last questions or comments on health insurance? None. All right, so Peter, are you going to present from here first, or are you going to go over there? So as Peter makes the transition with his equipment, mostly cough drops. We, we're going to play a bit of musical chairs this evening, as we're going to have multiple presenters on the different budget topics. I've had conversations with Peter and with Sheri and with Andrew. We're going to try and keep those presentations tight. The way that we're going to structure this is that we'll get some of the presentation provided around that topic. We're going to have an introduction, we're going to talk about facilities and capital, transportation, ed tech, proposed fees, and comparable communities or comparable communities comparisons, there's lots of Cs there. But after each one of those segments, we're going to stop and have the committee ask some questions. I'm going to hold for questions for the end from the public, so we'll get through all of this, we're going to talk about all this, and then we'll, we'll, we'll have time for deliberation. I just want to be very upfront with everyone who's going to be sitting at that table there presenting to us. I am going to give you a two-minute warning when you've got two minutes left, and then I'm going to ask you to stop talking so that we can ask you questions. That may be difficult for some of our administrators, so know that it comes with love. Peter, you have two minutes.
I'll try, Adam, I'll try, yeah. I'm going to go quickly through, you know, a little bit of the slides, but, you know, we do certainly want to make sure that as we make decisions, we try as best as we can within the resources of the community to stay anchored in our values. We're going to talk tonight about facilities and capital, transportation. We're going to talk tonight about facilities and capital, transportation, educational technology, some of the proposed fees, and spend some time on comparable communities comparisons of kind of how we allocate money. You know, certainly, we're seeing an increasing population of high-need students, and we're getting a real value for the dollar that we spend here at AB. For a community that spends a little bit below state average, you know, going on eight-and-a-half percent below state average from FY '22, we have top-level performance across the state, and we're recognized for that, not only in our high school, but at our elementary schools as well. That doesn't mean that we're done. We know that we have significant disparities in educational outcomes for our English language learners, students who qualify as low-income, as well as other student groups. You know, and that extends to kind of the social-emotional side of things as well. We've done a lot in terms of investment in social-emotional learning and mental health supports across the district over the last few years that we believe are important to keep. And at the same time, we're seeing the same disparities, and I think one of the data points that that shows up most often in is the chronic absenteeism of the district, which is going to be a significant consideration for us as we move into next year. So, our school committee guidelines are here. I'm not going to go through these again. We talked about these at the last meeting, but I just want to make sure we recognize those. And just to, you know, refresh the starting point that we originally projected back in October about a $9.5 million funding gap, and based on school committee feedback, have developed two budgets. An A budget that reduces approximately $2 million from what would be Level Services that would be used if an override does pass, and would require an additional $7.5 million in combined funding from Acton and Boxborough for the schools in FY '25. The B budget, the preliminary proposal, is a $9.5 million reduction. It's actually just a little bit under that to get the Acton Leadership Group plan to balance. That would be used if an override does not pass, which means that there's no additional funding from either community for the schools. We are in the second presentation of the preliminary budget. We're starting to get into more detail. We will have our budget workshop coming up on February 10th, and after February 10th, we will start moving from the preliminary budget into the superintendent's recommended budget prior to the legally required budget hearing, and then the final budget vote on March 21st. These are just some dates for the process, talking about preliminary budget votes, what the requirements are for that, as well as final budget votes and town meeting dates. Important dates in an override process, Acton Annual Town Election is the last week in April, and that is a ballot vote, which is a simple majority vote. And then Annual Town Meeting Approval has to happen in both towns, in Acton on May 6th, or beginning May 6th, and in Boxborough beginning May 13th. Want to just talk a little bit about budgets and start to get into, you know, showing the numbers behind the budget. So, I've started to break things out. As we had forecast early in the process, you know, we really have three major drivers around the budget increase. You know, one is under the Finance Director, administrative function, and that is where health insurance and fringe benefits show up. That's the $3.5 million increase you see in red. Similarly, under Personnel Director, that reflects all of the costs of our existing contracts. I will note that the reason it's a $2.4 million increase is because that reflects the reduction of 25.1 staff in this budget. So, you're actually seeing a reduced number from the original projection under the Personnel Director. And in Special Education, which was the third major driver that we talked about previously, that's still a $2.2 million approximate increase that we forecast. And then two slightly lesser increases that we have included in a memo that I've talked about and will start hearing about. One is under Facilities Director of about $640,000, and Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction of $195,000. So, just to highlight what those major drivers are for you. And then what you can see is, as we get into all of the school budgets, you know, the variances are minimal compared to, you know, the overall. And we'll certainly talk about those more and have an opportunity for open Q and A when we get into Budget Saturday on February 10th. I will note, bottom line is that overall increase is $9 million. Keep in mind, that's not the total amount of the override we're asking for, I just want to make sure that that's clear. That $9 million reflects the budget increase, knowing that, you know, some of it comes in under the tax levy that's already exists in both communities, as well as state and federal funding that we may receive in grants and other funding. So, here are the budget numbers. These are, continue to be unchanged from the last meeting. It's overall, in the A budget, we're proposing an 8.56% increase for a total budget of $115 million. And on the B budget, it's a 1.73% increase for a total budget of $108 million. A logical question that you might ask is, why, if our budget is only going either up either eight-and-a-half percent or 1.7%, why are the assessment increases so much higher than that? That's a great question, and I'll just, you know, address that right up front. That is because we are using over a million and a half dollars less of reserves next year, which had previously bought down those assessment amounts. You know that our reserves are at critically low levels. We don't find it advisable to recommend any use of those reserves going into next year, whether it's excess and deficiency, capital stabilization, or, you know, setting a circuit breaker limit lower. But that is the reason there's such a large gap between what the budget increase is and what the assessment increases look like. In addition to what you've seen already, we are recommending, this is about $75,000 in additional reductions. We continue to comb through the budget on a weekly basis, looking for opportunities to reduce areas that don't include staff. So, we've come up with this $75,000. We have not reflected this in the line item budget at this point in time, because we can only create so many versions of that. But this will go into the recommended line item budget that you see in the next round of budgets. I'm going to turn it over now to Sherry, and we'll bring up Mark to talk about facilities and capital.
Technically, I was all ready to do the last 10 slides, but he just kept on going.
Oh, Sherry, I'm so sorry.
So, really, this is Mark now.
It's okay. He didn't get the two-minute warning.
I was going to do the minute she said, let's make it easier for you.
That's true.
So, you don't have to, and then... Sherry, you can go over them again if you have different points.
My name is Mark Hamel. I'm the Facilities Coordinator for the Acton-Boxborough School District. We are going to start out with the first slide, which we're pressing here.
Right.
Right? There we go. Okay, now we know how to use this. So, we're going to start out with the FY '25 comparative summary by character code for the A budget. I'm going to spare going through the majority of these, as I've broken it down a little differently on the next slide. However, wanted to point to the custodial staff, 28 full-time employees, which reflects a reduction of three from FY '24. We currently have six full-time employees, an electrician, an HVAC tech, a mechanic, plumber, and two grounds crew. Our administrative team consists of four full-time employees. Facility Coordinator, myself, Assistant Facilities Coordinator, who also doubles as the Capital Project Manager. We have an Energy Manager, and we have a Facilities Administrative Assistant. So, that breaks down the team as constituted. So, the significant FY '25 changes that I'd like everybody to notice is the facilities building maintenance and repairs at $39,754. Basically, the majority of our buildings are nearing or past their EUL, Estimated Useful Life. That number we expect to slowly rise as we repair more and more mechanicals as they're reaching their end. There's two processes, we either replace or we repair. In this case, I expect more repairs in the future, but that's, that's something I wanted to point out right away. That's not worrisome at all to us, it's standard based on the age of our infrastructure. Our district-wide capital improvements plan, we've added $150,000. This was a planned increase to cover a few of the projects that we'll review later in the slides. Our custodial supplies, just increased costs. We're using the same amount as we've used previously over the past three to five years that I've looked at. The facility energy rebate, that's $205,000. That's based on a rebate that we would not get because the Boardwalk project was not complete. So, that's where that's coming from. And finally, the utilities costs going up $55,000 is basically reflective of a 3% increase in heat, electric, and water. So, the electricity grid, we gave, we broke it down to make it a little more legible, but what I wanted to start off with, the green, which comments on conservation and efficiency for energy savings, that's based on a 2009 benchmark that we set with the state. So, you don't see that in this grid, but that's what I at least wanted to share so everybody would understand that. On average, which is very successful for the district that we should all be very proud of, it looks like that we're saving roughly $500,000 since, per year, annually, and we are maintaining that. And I think everyone here should be very proud of that. So, the solar generation on-site, we see the use of that, that's in orange. The light blue is for renewable electricity that we've purchased. And of course, the darker blue is solid energy. You'll notice different spikes based on, obviously, the COVID years, '21, '22, we were back in, in operation, but we had windows and doors open for, for increased ventilation. And then 2023, of course, you can see that the doors and windows were shut, and you'll start seeing the fluctuations there. So, as we go to natural gas, very similar. Fiscally, year '21 jumps out, obviously, and that's, of course, doors and windows open. Gas is being used. Douglas and Gates wrapping up the construction over at Boardwalk. And then you see that FY '23, it starts to drop back off, as we now have the new building that you should all be very proud of, because it's roughly running right now at a third better than what the schools were in the past. I've heard a lot of different theories, a lot of different comments on that. And electricity, as we all know, is much more expensive than just gas. Well, we're a third down. So, I think it's a big deal. So, we're very proud of that. Jump into our capital projects that we have planned for FY '25. So, what you're going to notice right off the bat is the highlighted items. Those highlighted items have already been selected by the Capital Subcommittee, and wanted to share that with everyone. So, priority number one is the Hagerwell Chlorination System for Boxborough. As some of you may or may not know, and I'm going to not read this, I'm just going to go as, just, just speak to it. It's basically adding chlorine to the well that will, that supports the police department, the library, the fire department, and the Blanchard School. Our commitment is going to be based on actual use. It's not estimated, it's an actual use, and roughly, we're assuming right now, that's going to come somewhere around $130,000. Priority two will be the roof of this building, or at least the main part of it. It's well past its estimated useful life, and when you go up there, it's, there's been a lot of patching and a lot of Band-Aids for a long time, and it's, it's time, it's time to make some, some changes. We're going to try something a little different. We're going to go with a poured seamless roof. It's very energy efficient, it's, seams are what falls apart first. And, and this is going to, it's going to hopefully give us a long, it's a 20-year estimated useful life, and it doesn't require ripping anything off the roof. So, 20 years from now, you pour another roof over it, seamless. Priority three is the Jackson Street, that's, we're talking about the Jackson Church RTUs rooftop units at the high school. These are 11 gas-fired units that are well past their estimated useful life. There are, there are repairs that are, are needing, and some that cannot be repaired. We are going to consult out with an engineering team to move towards the district's goal of electrifying the district, and we're going to start that with the, with the engineering this, this season. Priority four, some of you talked about with me that are in this room, the chem storage closet. We just have a, a lack of ventilation in one of, in one of the rooms, and as the summer warms, we're having a little bit of gas runoff. It's causing a lot of, a lot of breakdown, a lot of corrosive, it's not necessarily a safety issue, but it is causing some corrosive issues with some of the materials in that room. And finally, kind of an exciting one, the high school. It's a, it gets pushed down the list, but it's very important to all of us. And the tennis court crack and sealing and resurfacing. So, we are going to do a full crack seal repair and resurface and restripe. Our goal is to, first, I want to say that comm ed is going to be taking on this responsibility, so this is not going to come out of the capital budget, which is, which is a wonderful surprise and gives us more room to do some of these other, other projects. Another exciting opportunity for the district, as I'm sure you've all heard of pickleball, we're going to restripe, or we're looking into restriping some of the, some of the courts to, to provide maybe a different revenue stream for the district and do tennis as well as, as well as pickleball.
Thanks, Mark. We'll take a brief pause here. Does anyone have any questions for Mark or Sherry on the facilities topic? Ginny?
I just want to say thank you about the tennis courts. Our tennis players, AB tennis players, are amazing, and it's an embarrassment, the state of our courts compared to those that, that they play. So, I'm really, really happy to hear that, that that's, that that's happening and that the community ed program is doing it is, is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Ben?
Yeah, quick question. If we go back to slide on, or the significant FY '25 changes in slide 23, one question I have and one concern I have is, under the utility costs, there's a $55,000 increase. What happens if energy costs, especially within the electricity market, increase greater than 3% due to the volatility in the commodities market?
I'm going to turn this one over to the person to my left.
I tried to look at the actuals, and I tried to budget based on the actuals. As far as the new school goes, we really won't know the rates until we're, like, completely done with the year. I did try to be a little bit, like, looking where we were. I raised the budgets 3%. Sometimes they would, it's equivalent to more than 3% because we didn't use the whole entire budget, so I'm trying to accommodate and be very useful of what we're going to be using. Obviously, if we do get in, to a spot where our electricity costs are a lot higher, I'll have to kind of come back to you and do some budget transfers in order to accommodate what we need.
Have you looked into locking into supply rates by any chance?
I have not, but I can, absolutely.
Yeah, I would certainly do that, and perhaps look out at a couple of the different companies that are working with the suppliers in order to lock in those rates to ensure that with the fluctuation of the markets out there, you can kind of dampen those rates and, and have kind of a locked-in rate for a period of time.
I know in a previous district, we did that with the town. Since we're regionalized here, I'm not sure what the town does, like, through Acton, but I can, we would do it ourselves. So, I can absolutely look into that.
Other questions? Comments?
Can I make a comment on that? Sure. I think, you know, one thing to recognize too, is I think by going out and trying to lock in rates, there's also an opportunity, you know, to recommit to using renewable energy sources, because if you saw in that slide, you know, it was not budgeted to move to renewables. And Kate Crosby, our Energy Manager, came to me earlier this year and said, look, could we go to renewables? It's, you know, I forget how many tens of thousands of dollars more in utility costs to do that mid-year, and I just said, we don't have the funding to do it this year. So, you know, that's something I would like to get us back to, is, is moving toward renewable energy. So, I think if we can couple that with, you know, buying down costs, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to do that in a relatively budget-neutral way.
Andrew?
Ben? One thing I would look at also is with your utility company, I believe it's Eversource here, there is a mandate by 2030 that we reduce our greenhouse submission, or greenhouse gas submissions down to pre-1993 levels, and beyond that, in 2050, I think it has to be net zero.
Andrew?
Well, first, I'd like Eversource to drop their rates to pre-1993 levels. With all the work you're doing on the roofs and the conversation you were just having regarding renewable and noticing the solar generation on-site, are the roofs applicable for solar panels as you're doing this other work? I know we probably can't do it now, but I'm just in thinking about it, noticing the hardline costs are going to rise.
Absolutely, it's a great question.
Because Eversource doesn't listen to me.
I can tell you, we've already looked into that. We were pursuing one source here for this building, and that's not out of the water, because, of course, we can take advantage of some grants, some other funding sources. So, we have been looking into that, and as I did put in my notes, that, you know, right now, it's on hold. We're looking into it deeper. In the case of district-wide solar, we have many plans that are, that are in, already in process, and, and I'm sure you're going to hear a lot more about that in the very near future, but this building was tested and, and has found that it could support a smaller array.
But this building was tested and, and has found that it could support a smaller array. It's really comes to cost, how much are you going to cost to put it up and what's the return? Obviously, we all have goals that we want to reach as a district. So this is a major point of every conversation with any building that we do.
Sure.
Andrew just asked my question, but the second one I had was the asphalt resurfacing. Is there any way we can reduce the use of asphalt?
The what?
The asphalt resurfacing. I mean, everybody's concerned about friendly, environmentally friendly usage of materials. So I see item number 10.
I think for the, the paving and asphalt work.
Yeah.
Oh.
A lot of that, yeah, a lot of that is really where it's critical and unsafe conditions. But I'll let Mark talk to that.
Yeah, I can help you with that. So what we're going to do immediately where, where it falls into budget concerns, we have a couple of things we're researching right now, breaking up some of the potential consulting that we're doing for the high school roof units. And if we can break that up into, into less costs, again, these are all estimated and budget lists. As that comes in smaller, we're going to take care of the biggest safety issues first. So what we've done is we've identified some issues at three of the schools already that kind of hit our priority marks. Where we, we need to do something here, we need to get rid. So that's how we're going to start with that. But we, we do recognize that there's, there's a lot that needs to be done. And of course, more every spring with the heave, frost heaves and things of that nature. So that is, that is, not all of the asphalt patching is going to be capital project. Some can come right out of our funds, smaller, smaller dollar amounts to take care of the biggest emergencies.
My concern is more around trying to get around asphalt. But I think Peter said that's a safety thing. But are there any places we can, we can get away from it without the safety concern?
Yanshun?
Hi, Mark. It's nice to finally meet you in person. I just have a question for the tennis court. I think at our last meeting, there was discussion about possibility exploring, like, the grants that's available. Do we look into that or is there a move to?
Yeah, there's a few things as well. We, we are looking into that as well as we've had a resident volunteer to, to assist in, in a potential donation. So there are, we are exploring everything we can do to save money for the district because, of course, there's plenty more things to add to it. So this is definitely something we're looking into.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, Mark. We are going to move on to the next topic. I've, I've got to move on, I'm sorry. We, we've got a long night ahead of us. Next item is transportation. No worries. It's a comfort chair.
Transportation. At the beginning of the school year, we reach out to all of the families to find out who is going to need transportation because we do transport all students. So our families had reported back, 4,081 students said that they would require transportation. Currently, we're only transporting 2,650 out of the 4,000 that said they needed transportation. We have over 3,200 bus stops, and that includes our late buses. We have a fleet currently of 48 buses. One of our leases is up this year, and that lease carries eight of them. We are looking to eliminate half of them, half of that fleet. And we have a total of 41 bus drivers. And we have three central office administrators. We are in the transportation. We have a transportation manager, an assistant transportation manager, and a dispatcher. So this also shows kind of the breakdown of any increases from, and changes from '24 into '25. The town of Acton is looking to replace their fuel depot. The additional hun, it's a total of $110,000 for us, but the additional $105,000 here would be the district's payment to the town for that fuel depot. And the next five items are based on annual increases. So our bus parking lease, our bus lease, the annual increase in the repeater fees, the gasoline and some maintenance and supplies. And lastly, the replacement of the tires and the glass. I really looked at what our actual was and we were able to reduce that by $4,000. This slide, the left box is our current transportation policy. So all students in kindergarten through grade three are transported no matter what the distance is. So according to our policy right now, any students that are in grades four to six that live more than one mile away from the school are eligible for transportation. And students in grades seven through 12, living more than two miles away, are eligible for transportation. The box on the right shows really what our current practice is. So we're currently providing transportation for any student who requests it. As a regional school district, we get reimbursed for the costs associated with students who live over a mile and a half. Our current practice reduces our reimbursement rate from between 80% to 90% to 60% or 70%, but that number could change each year depending upon who's signed up for it. This slide shows that if we were following our current policy, the graph that's on the right, 139 students are grades four to six that wouldn't be eligible to be transported by our bus drivers. The buses would still need to service the same neighborhoods despite freeing up the potential seats. So there really wouldn't be a cost savings for us for not picking them up. I know this is a little crazy, but this is a visual representation of two of the schools, Conant and Blanchard. And the students, the grayed out, or the orangeed out section and the grayed out section on the left and right, those are students that live within a mile. The blue dots are students that are in grades K to three that we pick up. And the little orange people are the students that are in grades four to six. And as you can see, they overlap. We have to still go down the same streets. We, so we really can't eliminate the buses for them. And this is the secondary level. This is junior high and high school. And in this scenario, there would be 649 students that would be removed from bus service if we were following our policy. It could result in less secondary routes. However, we still need the buses for the elementary routes, so we can't turn buses in. And in both elementary and secondary scenarios, there would still be a concern for, like, traffic for parent transport and kind of cluttering up the schools. Finally, we were, have some potentials to kind of ponder and look at. Like I said, we are looking to eliminate a total of two of the 83 passenger buses, one 47 passenger bus and one 29 passenger bus. Those leases are up this year. I've already talked to the company about having them do a new lease just for four. And we will, we are looking to replace the minibus, the 29-passenger minibus, with a hybrid minivan because we use that internally for our mail and we don't need a 29-passenger bus in order to do that. And based on the previous slides, it's unclear of the exact savings. A transportation study would need to be performed to kind of look at the cost savings. If we eliminated the single-tier elementary start times, we could have some savings, but it can also impact the junior high and high school start times. That would also involve a study. Lastly, we can look at the current open enrollment policy. We would need a significant community input and possibly help with redistricting maps and routes. Are there any questions on transportation?
Thanks, Sheri. Vikram?
I just want to say, when you deny your voice, you deny my constituents' voice. So my question is, it said there's a notation there. If there's hazardous route, then that, that comes into play for the, for the, you know, for the area, for the radius.
Mm-hmm.
Do no sidewalks count as a hazard?
I, I guess that would be up to the policy committee if they consider no sidewalks hazardous.
It depends on the road that's traveled. I mean, certainly a main road with no sidewalks, we're not going to have students walk down. But if they're on a cul-de-sac, walking to the end of the cul-de-sac to be picked up by a bus, we would not consider that a hazardous route.
Thank you.
Leela and then Tori.
Thanks, Sheri. I know that it, it would change depending on what exactly we're asking for, but do you have any sort of ballpark on what a transportation study might cost for things like the two things that are listed?
I've never had, in all the districts we've worked in, we've never really done a transportation study, although we've always had our own buses. I can absolutely look into it and report out the next time. I can get some quotes for it.
My gut is if you put $50,000 in your mind, you'd only be mildly pleasantly surprised or mildly disappointed. But, you know, what I'm finding now with all of the vendors out there is that $50,000 is like the new normal for, for doing work in districts. And we're seeing consulting fees that we used to be shocked at $30,000, now coming in at $100,000. So it's, you know, it's challenged, but I do think, you know, it, it's a significant expense, but certainly an expense that, you know, has a high return on investment potential.
So thank you so much for looking into this. I know I, I asked you last meeting, is there anything we can do for this year? And, you know, clearly, we found the little piece and everything else is bigger. And I respect that. But I think that also gets after kind of one of the bigger conversations that we're all having is as we look at, this year is really bad. We're going to do every little bit that we can to get through it. And we've got to start looking at what these opportunities are. So thank you for highlighting those and laying out what we need to do to move forward.
And I can report one more thing. We only have a couple of students now that are part-time kindergarten. And we've been talking to the, there's two schools involved. And we've been talking to the two schools. And we're looking to actually eliminate one of the routes and just use one bus and have the children maybe stay five, 10 minutes later to go pick them up. So Jen and I were working through that over the last couple of days.
Liz?
I don't know if this is even, because I know you said that you haven't really dug, you know, dug too much into the potential transportation study. But if that were something that, you know, let's say that that were an avenue that we wanted to go, would that even be something that would be feasible to see cost savings for FY '25? Or is that really looking more for the future?
It, it all depends on how quickly they could get the study done and what we could do if we, obviously, if we wanted to change the routes, if you really wanted to look at the open enrollment policy, this, I think that takes a little bit longer because you do have to have the community input. And that would really uproot a lot of students and redistrict them almost. So it would probably be more like an FY '26.
I, I think, just to add on to, I think one of the faster avenues to doing something is if the school committee wants to revisit the single-tier elementary start times, that potentially could be a faster decision. But it's still going to require dialogue among elementary families because you're changing pre-existing schedules. And then it also would require the committee to consider, you know, the real strategic decision that was originally made to do that was to get the high school and junior high on later start times. And, you know, that was done with the knowledge that there was financial investment in the decision that was made at the time. And so to undo a decision that had that financial investment to, to go backwards also requires thought and care around the impact of that. And so, you know, thinking about what do we want for high school start times particularly, but some junior high as well? And then do we keep elementary at the later start time like it is now? Or do we make a shift to elementary being earlier and preserving the later start time for junior and senior high students? You know, it's, there, there's still a few trade-offs and it would certainly need, you know, some attention. But I think the runway is a lot faster on single-tier elementary start times than it is on open enrollment. Because I think there's a lot of complexity around open enrollment that needs to be thought of and discussed.
I have two questions. One is, number one is, can you remind me how much the saving for the estimate five to seven bus savings from the single-tier elementary school?
Right now, our lease is $210,000 a year for eight of them. But some of them are smaller. So I would say maybe just $130,000 just for the buses alone.
Okay. And my second question is, I've heard chatters in the community about, you know, their surrounding towns that they charge for, for transportation services. I was just wondering, is it because we're regional school districts, so we have to provide?
Yeah, yes. We cannot charge students because we get a partial reimbursement. So we're not allowed to charge students for busing.
Even if they live within the 1.5-mile radius?
Correct.
We, we don't get reimbursed for students who live within a mile and a half. However, we cannot charge anyone for riding the bus because we're reimbursed by the state for the kids who live greater than a mile and a half. I didn't make the law, we just have to implement it.
Right.
One thing I will say, with the notion of, and this is an outside idea that, that would need, you know, some, some thought as well. But if we reduced five to seven buses from the elementary savings and reduced the number of leases on those buses, it is possible that we could retain bus drivers, but maybe lease some smaller, like, special education vans, you know, or minivans that, that have the required equipment. And maybe think about reducing particularly some of our McKinny Vento or foster care transportation services, which are typically the longer routes. And by bringing those routes in-house with some of our existing staff, I think there might be an opportunity to also realize some savings on that other driver, which is special ed transportation. And that's not for tonight. But, you know, some of these are all puzzles that, that have to fit together. And where drivers are an issue, you know, we don't want to give up the drivers that we have, but maybe we can repurpose and, and save money.
All right, I have two questions. The first is the transportation administration that we have. So we often get feedback that we're very top-heavy and administration-heavy. We've got a transportation manager, an assistant transportation manager, and a dispatcher. How often are those administrative staff covering routes and actually driving buses?
Almost daily.
Okay.
We have multiple drivers out, five to six sometimes, daily. And they're all licensed CDL bus endorsement drivers, and they are driving routes.
Thank you. My second question is, I think for both you and Peter. So you're hearing some interest maybe from the committee around changing start times. Our budget process moves very quickly from here on out. How quickly does the, does the committee need to come back to you and say, "This is something we want to do," so that it can get rolled into our budget projections in time for us to vote our preliminary budget on March 21st? I just want to, what I'm trying to capture here is, there's a, there's a potential savings here, but how realistic is it for us to do for this year? And how realistic is it for us to do as part in evaluation of the overall structural changes that we want to make to save us money in the out-years? Knowing that we've heard pretty clearly from the ALG and the Finance Committee in, in Boxborough and Acton that you're going to get this one-time money and then you need to figure out your problems. So that was a long lead into a simple question, maybe.
Well, if your preliminary vote is February 15th and we have to look into figuring out the savings, I guess we would have to figure out everything before that.
Well, the preliminary vote can't, shouldn't go up from the preliminary vote, but it can always come down from the preliminary vote. So, you know, I would say you would want to tell us, you know, probably by the end of Budget Saturday, you know, which is next, next Saturday, that this is something you want to pursue. You don't, you know, we're not going to make you tell us tonight. But within the next week, if you really want to pursue this, we should know soon so that we can get the wheels in motion before February break. Yeah, no pun intended with the wheels. I don't want to put the brakes on this process either. Sorry. If you have enough cough medicine, it kicks in. So, but we should know really soon in order to move forward.
Thank you. I, I just, like, for the committee's perspective, I just want you to understand that, that these are great ideas, but time is, is moving quickly. And I think that if we were to look back at when the committee before us, the committee before, before us, made the decision to go to single-tier, there was a pretty long process. There was a lot of deliberation. It was, it was a deliberate choice to make start times later for the high school based on social, emotional, and, and well-being of our students. And so we shouldn't take that decision lightly. I'm not saying we shouldn't consider it, but I think you should be realistic about the time it's going to take to consider that. Okay. Thanks, Sheri. I think up next is EdTech.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Amy.
Hi. My name is Amy Bizowitz, and I am the Director of Educational Technology. Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of the educational technology team tonight and for giving me the opportunity to go over our proposed FY '25 budget. EdTech's mission is to meet the technology needs of all members of our learning community here in A B. That's our students, our teachers, staff, and m- our students, our teachers, staff, administrators, and more. To do this successfully, the EdTech team needs to be able to support both our teaching and learning community, as well as our departments and all the day-to-day business operations that need to take place in order for our district to run smoothly and be successful. In developing the FY25 budget, I had one goal in mind, to maintain as many of our existing services and programs that we possibly could, so that we can continue to support our district goals and initiatives. This has proved to be one of the most challenging exercises I have done since coming to AB, especially in light of some of the personal cuts that I will talk about later. So here is an overview of our proposed budget, along with the percentage increases and decreases in funding for each of these lines. Trying to keep the budget similar to FY24, you really shouldn't and don't see any major changes here. The 52% increase in the maintenance of equipment includes items needed to support our, our wireless network moving into a cloud-based management system. And if you move on to the next slide, you'll see that we are projecting an overall rising costs for most of our categories due to inflationary economic pressures. The $8,500 increase in technology phones is due to an additional service needed to support the IP phone system at the Boardwalk in Blanchard. So if you move on to the next slide, you'll see the overall proposed operational budget for the EdTech department is $859,272. This does include new wireless access points, as well as the purchase of Chromebooks for the incoming freshman class next year. The next slide highlights some of the infrastructure improvements we've accomplished this, this year with FY24 funding. First, with the completion of a new district-wide phone system now in place, we are pleased to say that we are now in full compliance with the state's E911 regulations. On top of that, we have also upgraded both our wired and our wireless networks, with most of that work happening in the last month or so. And when I see Jason Cole next week, I will make sure I tell him that, because he knows that some of the, our, our very, very old core networks, which is, have been in place for 17, 18 years. So at this point, we have shifted into the final stages of our network refresh plan by completing the Parker Damon Building's wireless migration, and we will soon be doing the same here at the administration building and in the junior high school over the summer. Our next slide focuses on our FY25 infrastructure budget proposal. The costs here, they do include funding the purchase for new access points. However, this allocation is to establish a proper replacement strategy, as all of our buildings will now be in the new cloud-based management system. We also need to renew our cybersecurity services that are coming off a three-year license. We need to do that so that we can continue to protect us against, protect the district against rising cybersecurity threats. I do have infrastructure needs happening in the next several fiscal years, so I did highlight those with the replacement of a new firewall and looking at our virtualization environment. The next slide, all of the information I've shared with you so far has given you a sense of what's needed to create the operational core that supports AB. And I'm so fortunate to have an amazing operations team in place to support all of that work. But I do need to shift gears now, because it's time to focus on why we work so hard to maintain a strong and robust infrastructure, and that is to support our teaching and learning. And that is to support our teaching and learning in the digital age. Educational technology represents a transformative approach to education, leveraging digital tools to create more dynamic, personalized, and inclusive environments. Here in AB, our main strategy to support this has been through the use of student Chromebooks, along with the digital tools and resources that are not only aligned with our curricular goals, but also approved for use by the Massachusetts Student Data Privacy Alliance, of which AB is a member. And as of last week, hot off the presses, we have been awarded the Municipal Cybersecurity Awareness Grant, which will provide free training to all of our staff. And for our certified educators, they can receive PDPs if they choose to participate. So for FY25, our next slide, we will continue to set aside funding for the purchase of Chromebooks for our freshman class, along with the need to replace the physics lab computers at the high school. To continue to support our teachers as we move forward with MTSS, we will be purchasing Forefront, an assessment data platform. And again, to provide transparency of future needs, we are planning on replacing the World Language Lab at the high school in FY26, and the year after that, we will focus on the Visual Arts Lab. So it is my final slide that presents the greatest challenges the EdTech department will be facing next year with the proposed FY25 budget, and that is the elimination of our digital literacy coaches and the building-based tech support team at the elementary schools. I hope I have given you the opportunity, opportunity to see how the EdTech department has laid a strong foundation over the last decade by establishing a solid infrastructure, providing technology tools to all of our students, and ensuring that educators receive training in innovative instructional strategies that support universal design for learning, MTSS, and the growing needs of all of our students. Each of the bullets that you see on this slide will profoundly impact teaching and learning next year with the loss of these positions. I worry that we will see a decrease in the use of digital tools by our educators, and that we will be extremely limited in the amount of professional learning that we will be able to provide our teachers. We will be challenged in implementing new technology, and we will see an increase in struggles with new assessments and screeners that depend on, on our technology. Our teachers need these positions in order to meet the increasing demands of our teaching and learning community. And while we will continue to do our best, the EdTech department will be greatly limited in providing the training and support teachers have come to rely on to continue to inspire students of this digital generation, as well as struggle to progress on the school and district-wide initiatives. I appreciate the time that you gave me, and thank you. Ready for questions?
Thanks, Amy. Questions? Rebecca?
Hi, thank you. I think a lot of people maybe miss out on understanding the value of technology in the classroom, and I was wondering if you could speak to the difference between the old way of doing it, where there was a computer lab, where kids would go to write an essay, say, versus having a laptop on them in the classroom?
Yeah, yeah. I've been here almost 15 years, so I can literally speak to this, because when I first came in, everybody did go to the computer lab. And it was the, the introduction of the Chromebooks and the Google Communication and Collaboration Tools, the, the idea that those devices weren't as costly as MacBooks and PCs that really allowed us to get technology in the hands of all of our students. In doing so, it gives students choice, it gives students voice, it gives teachers the opportunity to provide curriculum resources in different modalities. It supports pretty much everything that we do in the district. And, you know, I think in this day and age, where it's about, you know, creating content and allowing the students to be encouraged to think outside the box, it's these types of tools that can give the teachers that, that set of innovative, that, a way to innovate their instructional practices that they weren't able to do, you know, 13, 14, 15 years ago. Thank you for that question.
Hi, Amy. Thank you for fixing my parent square app today. It was nice to meet you.
Oh, yes. You're welcome.
I feel like the IT department, EdTech department are the unsung heroes before, behind all the smooth running of the schools, because I know...
I appreciate that. I do try hard not to be at their microphone at these school committee meetings. And so, yes, I think in many ways, we are sort of behind the scenes, but, but everything that we do is, is quite important.
Yeah. I have a question about the lifespan for Chromebooks. My understanding is that Chromebooks, as everything else, that they have evolved over the years. I think in the beginning, Chromebooks lifespan was three to four years, and then Google stopped supporting them. And, you know, how long do they support them now, like?
Google just announced that for all of their new hardware, they will support operating OS updates for 10 years, which is a game changer, a game changer. And I think one of the reasons that they, they felt pressure was the amount of waste that these Chromebooks, you know, if they die after three or four years, how much waste that, that is. I fully intend using Chromebooks for as long as I possibly can. So I think that will be a real game changer in terms of our Chromebook lifecycle replacement strategy. So, yeah, that was, that's just, that's a recent update by Google.
Okay. And my second question, sorry, is that I know some schools have policy that the Chromebook stays in the school, the students are not allowed to take them home. I absolutely understand that, but some schools allow the students to take them home. I was just wondering, like, is this significant when you have, like, accidental damage to the device? Is it a huge cost, or?
First of all, I, you know, the teachers have, I've given the teachers the ability to decide how they want the technology to go back and forth. From an EdTech perspective, we welcome the devices to go home. But I do understand, you know, some teachers, they don't want that. And I certainly promote a balanced use of technology, and if anything, you know, close the screen. So, sorry, what was the last?
I was asking if, if there was a huge cost associated with accidental damages?
With the repairs. So at the junior high, we do see students at the junior high that tend to have more accidents with their Chromebooks as they come and go, as the kids, as the, as the kids move on to high school. Not so much, but there are, there are some. So I would say roughly that falls, it's under about $10,000 a year. It's, it's, it's actually quite good in comparison to what I thought it could be.
Thanks.
Okay, so I know that Lakshmi, Andrew, Vikram, Tori, and Liz all want to ask questions. I'm going to give all of them an opportunity, but I'm going to ask Amy to respond quickly. See how that, so you don't want to be at the microphone? I'm giving you the opportunity to get away from the microphone as quickly as possible. So Lakshmi, Andrew, Vikram, Tori, Liz. Go ahead Lakshmi.
So my kids, when they were in elementary school, they did not have all these devices. So my question is this, if there is a technology being used in the classroom, that frees up a teacher's time. So is, how is the gain in exchange for the cost in technology being realized? Is the teacher able to spend more time working with the student? Is the teacher, we don't need assistance? Or how are we kind of making a gain? Technology's speeded up everything. I do a lot more than I did 15 years ago with technology, right? So where, what's the gain for us?
Well, I think it's more about the allowing teachers to, to, to group their, their students accordingly, and they can use the technology and the technology resources to have one set of kids working on a certain, you know, learning unit while they're doing direct instruction with another set of students, so on and so forth. That's one of the main reasons that I, I think that technology in the classroom is so important. Does that answer your question?
I was actually looking more at, I mean, the technology is delivering the content, right? Really, teacher does not have individualized tech content. She can probably tune it, she or he. But my, my question is, is the teacher able to spend quality time with the children?
Definitely, definitely.
And do we see the gain of that? I mean, can we go back to the district and say, here is the technology expense, and for that, we are getting XYZ as a quantifiable?
Quantifiable? You know, I, I think we should be thinking that technology enhances, but it's certainly by no means would I want it to replace, you know, the, the teacher. You know, with AI, maybe we'll see where, where that goes, but, but no, not here in AB.
That'd be a good question for our educator panel on Saturday when we've got educators here. Enter.
Not here in AB. No, it, it enhances, but it does not replace.
Thanks, thanks Amy for being here. Yes, mild, tiny, tiny follow-on in some respects with Lakshmi's saying that with technology, you get a deeper quality of opportunity for learning, and with that deeper quality of opportunity for learning, there seems to be an additional need for skills in the classroom to be able to manage that. You have on the screen, the digital literacy coaches are going down.
Yeah.
The opportunities that are afforded to our students and our teachers through the technology that's having now in their hands also demands a certain level of education on the part of our teachers. And how will this on the screen affect that in the classroom?
The limited amount of professional learning opportunities that we're going to be able to provide, limited development of new lessons in teaching the DLCS standards, the Digital Literacy Computer Science standards. Those are big ones. Those are real big ones. I think as a result, we're going to have decreased, the teachers will, will not be using the digital tools as much, and we're going to lose some of the progress they, that we've made over the last decade.
Thanks. Vikram?
I want to say, actually, I'm a senior networking systems administrator for OXXO America, and I oversee the tech in five countries. Well, actually, it's, it's three countries now. But nevertheless, the importance, also, my wife is, is well-known in EdTech. She goes to national conferences and presents in EdTech. So the importance of EdTech in the classroom cannot be underestimated, especially in today's world. We've come a long way from chalkboards and using slate and sitting on the ground. We live in a digital world. AI is now coming to the forefront, and to cripple our EdTech would just be extremely foolish thing to do. It's very pleasing to know that now Google is going to be supporting Chrome for the next 10 years. That's really great. That will definitely be a cost savings for the district. Strongly support EdTech, and everybody should be well aware. I mean, how many of us could live without our cellphones in our pockets for more than five minutes? I mean, come on. You want to get rid of Chromebooks for, for students to be cutting edge? I mean, let's be real. Tori?
Thank you, Amy. Seconding Andrew and Vikram's comments about your comments about those staffing changes are big, I did just, you know, I went out and looked at research because that's what I do, right? One of the things that really struck me is there is an important theme in there about education, about using EdTech well, and how important that is. So reinforcing what everybody's saying, this is important, and we ought to, we ought to think about how we support this. I'm wondering if maybe you could give us a little bit of an example of exactly what it means to be able to personalize learning in the classroom. And I'm kind of thinking along some of the tools that are out there for math, that students can be working on at their own pace when maybe they're not in some of that group instruction, because I think that'll help people understand how this is such a powerful tool compared to just a paper textbook that many of us grew up with.
Right, right. Well, I mean, it's about having the ability to, like, universally design your lessons, right, to meet the learning styles of all of the, of the kids in front of you, right? I would say it provides choice, it provides voice. I think that is very important. I think when it comes to math, it's certainly way more than what it used to be, which was go on Stardust Math Games and things of that nature. But you have the delivery of instruction that can be through media, it can be through, you know, of course, direct instruction, but it's those different modalities that I think are, are key to enhancing math lessons.
All right. Liz, quick one?
So just to bring it back to sort of the budget concern, and I'm not sure if this is a question for you, Amy, or Sheri, or Peter. Is there any feasibility, and this is going to sound callous, but is there a way that we can charge the parents, like a technology surcharge, to offset the cost to the district on either some of this hardware or some of the software? You know, obviously not for need-based families, but it's something where I, as a parent, would be willing to pay an annual surcharge for my kids to have access to this technology.
So you cannot create a surcharge for access to curriculum. And so I think one of the challenges is when you start talking about Chromebooks, you, you can't unilaterally tell everyone they have to pay a fee, because Chromebooks are, right now, the primary way that kids access the curriculum. There are some districts that, you know, will charge, like, insurance. It's optional insurance. You know, when we buy Chromebooks, I'm, Amy, I'm pretty confident that our Chromebooks, we buy them with a fully insured policy. So if it's damaged, we can send it back and we get a new one as a replacement. You know, that certainly expires after a period of time, but some districts will also charge, like, a Chromebook insurance fee to help protect against, like, lost theft, things like that. The, we talked that over with the administrative team. It would generate fairly little revenue. And quite honestly, because one, with a higher level of damage at the junior high, that we just heard Amy say, the high school students would be essentially paying an insurance policy on a device that's fully insured. And then the junior high students who take over that device after four years of wear and tear would be paying an insurance policy for the replacement would be paying an insurance policy for the replacement of a device that was used by a high school student for four years. It just didn't, it didn't feel like the right avenue to go to, so we withheld that.
I, I'll add one more thing, as part of my thanks to Amy, I think the, the one thing that we don't wanna forget about here is that the technology does open up the general education classroom for kids who might normally not be able to access it. Um, those who can't necessarily read or write at the same level as their peers, but can create and think and participate at that same level. And having that technology available to them, um, brings them into the general education, brings them to the room with their peers, um, and allows them to participate at that same level. So I think that that's another component that we need to consider as we look at having technology in the classrooms. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Uh, on to proposed fees, I want to commend our administration for keeping their time. And I want to remind our own committee that, um, we're not doing so good at that. But the questions are great, I think it's really important to get this information out. So I'll hand it over to Andrew, talk about some proposed fees.
Yeah, I, um, I will try and keep it quick, uh, for everybody. Th- this is a section where we, um, would like to present some proposals for, uh, either an introduction to fees or an increase in fees. This is certainly a strategy that we think, um, is, is one that we have to take seriously as much as it's always something that we're reluctant to do and, and wanna be mindful of additional added costs to families on top of other things that they have to be responsible for. And yet, knowing the contours of our budget, these are avenues that I think help, um, offset other hard choices that we have to make. So it's really just about prioritizing different types of choices. We'll start with the hard, in some ways, the hardest one, and what I mean by the hardest one is simply that this has been an area of great interest to this school committee in previous versions of, uh, school committees in terms of its commitment to try and get to, um, a, a no-fee kinder, all-day kindergarten option. For a few years now, the district has been working to reduce tuition to eventually get to zero. It started at $4,500 and, um, through various strategies have gotten to $1,800 per student this year. Um, the original plan for next year was to stay at $1,800 as part of a multi-year plan. However, given, again, like I said, the contours of the budget, uh, we do feel like as we're weighing different options and different choices that we have to make, um, we do think that it, it is prudent to perhaps consider, um, a temporary increase in that amount for next year. So when we talked about the A budget, um, with the proposed reductions of around $2 million, we recommend an increase of $125 to the all-day K tuition for 1,925. Uh, and then in the B budget, the, um, with the reductions of nine and a half million dollars, we would consider, ask the committee to consider an increase of $500 to the all-day K tuition for FY25 to $2,300. Preschool tuition, preschool, uh, is an integrated preschool, students with disabilities do not attend at any cost. Uh, typically developing peers who, uh, choose to enroll do so at a cost to families. Um, there has been no tuition increase since FY18, and so we do want to propose an increase of approximately 5%. We do think that given, you know, typical annual costs, uh, related to salaries, supplies, materials, so on and so forth, the fact that we have not raised tuition at all, uh, for the past six years, and, uh, proposing a 5% increase is, is proportional, is measured, uh, and is reasonable, and will certainly, again, help, um, sort of soften the edges of our, uh, budget choices. Athletic fees, athletic fees has always been something that, uh, we've been trying to monitor carefully. Um, and again, for those who access athletics, it, you know, it is a cost, especially those who are multi-sport, uh, students and families. Right now, we're $250 per sport, both at the junior and high, uh, junior high and high school. Uh, and then those for ice hockey and Alpine ski, there's an additional $250 with a thousand-dollar family cap per year. Right now, and historically, we have been running a deficit in athletics by $100,000. Um, and so I would say, just importantly, that separate from any of these specific budget scenarios this year, um, our athletic budget has been an area of concern, and so we may, even if we didn't have, uh, the conversations that we're having, likely would have already approached you anyway about proposing, um, an, an increase in athletic fees. If the athletic fee does not increase, we would then have to increase our operating budget to account for, um, the ongoing deficit. Here is just some comparable, um, dual-county league fees. Uh, my son goes to Lincoln Sudbury and my daughter goes to Concord Carlisle, so you can do the math and they play multiple sports. Um, and Acton Boxborough is, uh, on the lower end, as you can see, compared to our comparable communities, which is a great thing, and yet I do think, um, this helps you get a sense of, we have similar costs, both in terms of equipment, but also, quite frankly, since post-COVID, um, transportation fees have just skyrocketed. So, you know, in, in the past, when a, a bus for a, an away game would cost $250, $300, they now cost $600, $650. And so when you also have decreasing participation, you also have some fixed costs. If you have, instead of 40 kids on a team, you have 30, you're still paying for a bus. Uh, and so there are some fixed costs that aren't proportional to the number of kids who participate, but just the cost of the event, uh, the sport or the activity itself. And then finally, or I don't know if it's finally, but certainly the student activity fee. Um, we have not had a, a general global student activity fee at the junior high and high school. There have been some specific activities, uh, that are a little bit more involved and a little bit more costly that have had fees, and they tend to be academic teams, the Quiz Bowl, academic decathlon, speech, speech and debate, where they have away meets. They, in some ways, they almost mimic athletic teams because of the number of competitions and costs and transportation and so on and so forth. We are proposing, in order to continue offering the vast array of clubs at both schools, a one-time $50 fee for access to any and all clubs, um, each year at, um, at both schools. This would, uh, assist with actually funding the clubs every year, and, and Joni has expressed, um, a real advocacy, and, and this is where I've had to play sort of the, the bad guy, where she wants to increase clubs, and I just say, we don't have the funding, um, because they do have costs associated with stipends and other things. There are students every year who have really creative club ideas, they wanna create, um, spaces and carve out areas where students with shared interests and shared passions can pursue them, and, and you don't wanna say no to that. And yet, there are some practical limitations that, um, that we are facing. Certainly with some of our proposals, there is a proposal in reduc, in reducing the operating budget that supports activities. And so if that's done, if we still wanna offer the same level of clubs, we do have to find other funding sources, and that would be in the form, in the form of fees. And you can see, again, some comparable communities, um, do already charge, uh, these global, uh, fees. Finally, um, at the high school, there is currently a $200 parking fee currently assessed to students who want to park on campus. We're proposing a $50 increase, uh, for those wondering, sort of, you know, how do, how do you justify these types of fees? Uh, just a reminder, when we have that, that much traffic and, and added traffic with students parking, we have campus monitors, we have campus security, we also have costs for maintaining the facilities areas. Um, and the parking fees help to offset those things where you have people directing traffic and all sorts of other things that I think we would all agree are, are important, given, um, the, the congestion and the density of traffic that is certainly added and contributed by, um, student parking. That's it.
Thanks, Andrew. Questions? I see Lakshmi, I see Liz, and then Andrew.
I've, I've heard this, uh, question, and I actually came across when my kids were in high school too, um, the activity fee. If, if you charge by the activity, would you be, uh, able to support more, uh, activities? And so the teams, uh, some of the kids who think their, their interests are never supported, because there's never room for new activities. Is that possible?
I would say, uh, there's two answers to that. One is, I, the short answer is yes. However, I do wanna temper that by saying one of our motivations for proposing an activities fee is that it would probably also accompany potentially, depending on our budget scenario, a reduction in how much we actually fund through our operating budget. Like, right now, at the junior high school there's, and I'm gonna make up a number, $50,000 in the junior high budget to pay for activities. And that's for stun, you know, what reductions we have to make. If we do generate additional, um, revenue from these fees, then it would allow them to expand. It would allow them to, when students are coming and saying, I wanna do this club because I see this as an unmet need, it does provide them that, that runway to potentially say yes, rather than just the blanket, sorry, we don't have funding. So I think, I think optimistically, the answer is yes, but I do wanna temper that by saying this is also in respect. But I also gotta say that I'm fully opposed to an increase in fees for the athletics, a little less so for the activities, because I think without one now, it makes sense to do it. I think our role as a district is to create full people, smart and well-educated, self-sufficient people, and to be a full person. You need more than what can be measured on standardized tests. And increasing the fees for athletics at a time when students need to buy their own equipment, don't have uniform, uniforms, play on failing fields, to stands that are rusting through and falling apart, and when we ask those students to raise funds for their teams in the tens of thousands, it's wrong. We price out athletics, we price out activities, and we'll weaken our schools and weaken our students. We wanna close that 100,000 K, reducing the number of students who play these games won't help. I think that by raising the, the activity fees, you're going to take people out of athletics. And Jim Carrey?
You, Jim, had this thing, you said tonight that I thought was really good, that, you know, culture is key and the rest are details. And I think that is something we need to keep in mind. Without the things that happen between tests and homework, school is just a non-paying job. These increases will not raise the quality of the experience for our student athletes. They'll instead reduce our population of student athletes and lower the quality of the culture in our community. And while I recognize there's a dollar up there, maybe instead, we try to get more kids to do this. So the fixed cost of, for 40 is less than we have to deal with now. I would please say, let's not price kids out of athletics and out of the things that take them into other areas of their heads. That's all.
Vikram?
Uh, I'm, I'm sympathetic, Andrew, to what you're saying. Um, I think there's some, there's an argument to be made there. Uh, what I was gonna say, my question is, is, is there gonna be sort of, sort of piggybacks a little bit? Would there be a hardship allowance, like, for that kind of?
Thanks for mentioning it, I should've mentioned that from the get-go and certainly in each slide, that, uh, in all of our practices, especially when it comes to fees, we would never want to prevent access, um, to opportunities, whether extracurricular or otherwise, based on financial needs. So there would always be a threshold like there is now. So right now, whether it's, um, whether it's student activities that have costs, or whether it's athletics, there's always a process and, and, um, and, and a threshold that, that people can, in, at least in my experience when I was principal of the junior high school, um, you know, it was not a burden. We did not wanna also make it a burdensome process where people had to prove a certain hardship. So, um, so I think we would probably maintain that, that practice.
Thank you.
Uh, just to add to that, I, I do know that it says in certain places when you're signing up for things that, that's there.
Yep.
But twice I slipped through the cracks and paid for things that I shouldn't have, so I know that that happens to people.
Okay.
I don't have an answer for what to do about that, but maybe just keep getting that message out there.
Yeah. No, I think what you point out is sort of a, you know, despite the philosophy, the procedural piece, uh, could use some refinement, and I think that's always good feedback.
Andrew, I have two questions. Do we have a comparable cost for the private pre-K programs in town and where we are compared to those?
I think, I, I think I've heard that we do, but I don't have them off the top of my head, so I'm happy to go back and get that information.
Great, and then my second question was, of the fees that you've proposed, um, we, we, you, you clearly said that the increase in kindergarten tuition and pre-K are included in the budget savings or additional revenue now. Are the other ones, the athletic fees, the parking fees, the activity fees, are all of those already included in the A and B budget as a, a revenue item or an offset?
I believe they are, but I wanna let Peter confirm that.
Right now, um, if we don't increase the $100 athletic fee, we would need to, um, add another $100,000 to the, the budget, base budget, um, for athletics, so that has been included, um, as has parking. All, all of the proposed fees are reflected in the budget, correct, Sherry?
Yeah.
Great. Any last questions on this one?
And for the public out there, it wasn't Andrew Shen who proposed all these fees, just to be clear. When you say you proposed, I'd just like to get that out in the ether, please.
Or Andrew Schwartz, for that matter, it was no Andrew.
Andrew Schwartz.
It was no Andrew.
Okay, uh, we are now going to, uh, spend some time on the comparable communities, spending comparisons. So, uh, turn it over to Peter to, um, put us up against some of, uh, the, both comparable communities that we look at, and also some of the other, other regional districts, um, and I'll leave it to Peter to describe more.
All right, so this is more of a conversation and just sharing some data, uh, with you. And Andrew, as you do this job more and more, you will learn that it's better to go last than right before last. Um, our administrative team pleaded with him not to raise fees, um, and he just kept saying, we have to do this. So, you know, just, just to clarify the point that he was making.
It's okay, there's four less buses that you can put, push them in front of for next year, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Um, no, to, just, all of the data that I'm gonna present to you around comparable communities and statewide averages comes from DESI's website. Um, it's publicly accessible, people accessing the packet online can click the links. Um, you can even create your own comparable communities if you don't like the ones that we use, that's fine. Um, and we would encourage people to take a look at, at school finance. You know, I've said before that we're a tremendous value, um, and we also have to recognize that we have some of the higher property taxes, um, in terms of residence. So there's clearly a divide between property tax rates and school funding, um, and how we're able to do that. So, you know, that's, that's not a judgment, it's just, it's a, a statement of fact. And so whether you look at comparable communities based on the 2008 comparable community report that was done here in the district, or, um, at regional districts, we're below the average, um, in terms of what we spend per pupil. Um, and yet we have a good, high return on investment for that spending. On the statewide reports, one of the things that you can do is you can actually look at your district's average versus the state average for different types of funding. Um, and I actually had to do a considerable amount of digging on the DESI website to come up with the actual roles and responsibilities that went into each of these, um, positions, but they are there. So I thought it would be helpful for you and the community to understand kind of what goes into different categories of spending and how we fall relative to the state average. You know, this is not a plea around whether we should be funded at state average to get top-performing results, that's not the intention. But by comparing it to state average, you can create some type of a benchmark that allows us internally to understand what our priorities should be. So if on average, we are spending 8.3 below, state average, 8.3% below state average, you would roughly expect that different categories, a benchmark could be that all categories might be 8.3% below state average. So you can kind of judge priorities from that. And when you look across, you can see we have some variances. So I think we have certainly, and I'm actually proud to say, we have, you know, um, put our money into instructional leadership. We've put our money into teachers. Those are both things that we know directly impact students and the quality of the educational, education students receive. We have definitely put our money into substitutes and paraprofessionals, uh, but this also includes library media services, um, that students receive, digital distance learning, online classes, we don't do a lot of distance learning here in the district, um, as well as medical and therapeutic services. So that's one of the areas of very few that we spend above state average. Professional development, and I highlighted instructional coaches here, because we've heard a lot of discussion of elementary coaching. Um, and instructional coaches are actually qualified under the professional development category. We spend 50% below state average on professional development for our educators. So when we talk about helping educators, we have to also think about the type of professional learning that educators need to continue to grow in their profession, and this is certainly not an area that we should be proud of, of, of our spending over time. Instructional materials, we talk about things that directly touch students as well. Um, and this does include student and staff instructional hardware. We are 50, more than 50% below state average in that spending category. Um, and this is through FY22, I wanna note that. So, you know, there's unfortunately a gap in reporting, um, because there are some districts around the state that don't get their FY23 numbers in on time, so there's always almost a year and a half lag in the state reports. The next reports will probably be out in mid-March, um, and people can look in line. Guidance and counseling, this is an area of significant spending for us, and it should be. Um, we've had, you know, a period of really significant mental health issues in our district, and we've certainly prioritized the mental health services that we have for our students. Pupil services as well, um, this isn't necessarily what you think, sometimes people think special education, um, costs go into pupil services. Special educators, our teachers, um, as are, are English language educators, those actually go into the teacher category, where we're slightly below state average. Excuse me, um, so pupil services, that's, you know, everything from transportation to food services, athletics, you know, school security, things like that. We're just about state average, maybe a little bit more. Operations and maintenance, um, we know this from some of the concerns that we have around buildings and grounds and, and the upkeep of those. Uh, we are about 23, 24% below state average, and then benefits and fixed charges. Um, I'm gonna note that this does not, this is FY22 data, and does not reflect, uh, recent trends in health insurance or retirement contributions, things like that. But at the time, we were about 14% below state average, so. You know, just another caveat, you know, we've reduced positions over the last several years. Uh, because this is FY22 data, it's not gonna reflect the changes that have taken place in district over those two years. Um, but it's the best data that I can use from a reliable source. source at the time. Here are some peer districts based on that comparable communities report, and you can see kind of where per pupil spending falls. It's always, it's always arranged in every district. It depends on the relative ability of a district to fund education, depends, can depend on state aid levels, it can depend on community contributions, and many, many factors. So there's a lot that goes into this, but this is the data from that purpose. If you go online and you're looking at the regional version of the same table now, you can actually create your own table and sort it based on each category so you can judge kind of relative priorities of different districts. And, you know, then that allows us to think about contacting districts, understanding best practices, and thinking about how we can manage resources in an efficient way. Teachers per one hundred students, you know, we are still below the average of our peer districts in terms of the number of teachers that we have per one hundred students. You know, it's a little hard. I tried to do a line for, you know, general education staff and then special education staff because the orange bars are kind of all over the place, it can be tough to see how we spend in terms of special education staff. But DESI did have a breakdown for that as well. You can't bring in as many peer districts into this spreadsheet, but I did do a sampling of peer districts, and you can see, you know, we are average to a little above average in terms of staff per one hundred students for our kids with disabilities in district. Paraprofessionals, this is an area where we have historically spent above the average of our peers. And then, you know, same holds true for both general education paraprofessionals, which are our elementary classroom assistants, as well as our special education paraprofessionals, which are more of our full-time roles. In terms of how we spend relative to comparable communities on paraprofessionals, you can see, we do spend a little bit above average, but there are a number of districts that have similar, you know, allocations of special education staff to what we do. So we're not seeing, I know, you know, special education for me was an area where it was such a significant budget driver, and we had added staff. You know, we've added a significant number of staff, I think, since I've been here, probably about thirty special educators, but it's not getting us wildly above average. So I certainly wanted to take a look at that and make sure we were getting our resources to the students who need it most. And then here's just another chart that kind of looks a little bit deeper at the relative number of special education staff and all of the different roles, and I included a table to help you understand what roles were included in the chart as well. Leadership per one hundred students, again, the lines can be a little hard to, to figure out because they, they move as the bars move, but you can see the dark gray would be district-level leaders, light gray is school-level leadership, and the orange are, excuse me, the gray are district instructional leadership, and then the orange are school leaders. I will note that over the last several years, we've made, you know, some pretty significant reductions in our teaching and learning department, which are not reflected in this chart. Student support per one hundred students, similarly, you can get a sense of this. And again, if you want to know the categories, you have to kind of go back a little bit to some of this area. And unfortunately, DESI's reporting here doesn't line up exactly with DESI's reporting on the charts. I can't control that, unfortunately, but I would encourage people to write to the Department of Education early and often. Clerical and tech support, again, we're, we seem to be about average in our spending on clerical and tech support. I actually think that clerical support is probably about the average of this, whereas tech support, we're probably a little low in terms of what we're doing, which is also significant consideration considering what you've heard for planned reductions over the coming year. So I'm happy to now turn it over to questions and spend a little time.
Thanks, Peter. All right, so it's nine thirteen. I want to give the committee ten minutes to ask some follow-up questions, and I will open this up for the committee as a whole to any of the topics that we've discussed. And then at about nine thirty, let's say, we'll open up to public comments and public questions. So who has a question? Lakshmi?
So I'm looking at the reductions one, I think it's after this.
Oh, the, those slides that are after this are just slides used in the last meeting, but I included them in the packet for reference.
Okay. So my question is based on that. So how many of these reductions, you probably covered that, I did, I did not attend that meeting. How many of these affect classrooms and how many are outside the classrooms?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we can certainly get that.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess that, you know, the, what's hard, a little harder to quantify in that is I think we have to be a little more specific than classrooms and not classrooms because oftentimes, things that we reduce impact classrooms, but maybe not directly with kids on a daily basis. So for example, like digital literacy coaches, those will definitely, the loss of those will definitely impact classrooms and students. However, depending on someone's perspective, they may not see the direct impact on kids, or they may.
Okay.
So that, I just want to be cautious about how we quantify that.
Yeah, I understand that. But at least we don't see direct classroom staff cuts here.
No, I think, Sheri, do you have a sense overall of the reductions that we made? I don't know if you have the other slides up in front of you. How many of them are general education kind of classroom instructional staff? I want to say it's probably five, seven, eight.
The, in the A budget, so the...
Yeah, eight or nine.
In the A budget, there is, in the elementary reductions, library would be one, and then at the junior high, there is an English teacher position and a part-time Spanish teacher position and a PE position. And at the high school, there is a English teacher and counseling position and some assistant positions.
Yeah, in the A budget, we were able to prioritize, you know, trying not to touch classroom staff to the greatest extent possible. The challenge is the B budget gap is so large that the workforce in other areas is already small, and you, you can't reduce proportionally, and that, that's one of the challenges you get to.
Other questions from the committee? Andrew?
It seems like a lot of the decisions that are made over the previous years are focused around the quality of life and the life balance for our students and for our families are coming with a cost that we're unable to pay now. And I'm concerned, I'm curious, about how we maintain that balance for our students and for our, our, our community while still being able to manage the, the budgets. And I know that A, the A budget is, is a two-million reduction, and I wonder if there's any continued flexibility to drive that reduction down to help maintain some of the benefits that we have from the shift we've, we've made. In particular, you think about the, the stress that was added to the students that caused all the, the personal and emotional issues that we had in previous years. And I, I would love to get your opinion on it.
When you say drive the A budget number down, you mean reduce the number of reductions?
Reduce the number of reductions, yeah. To try to find a way of reducing the amount of...
I, I...
From two to one.
Yeah.
I'd like to see if we can get something to get more of a fully funded.
You know, I, I think it depends on other structural decisions that we're willing to make. I really wish we could come in here and say, we, we have a million-dollar-plus solution to health insurance right now. And I just don't have enough information to see that that's gonna materialize for next year. I do think, you know, transportation costs, you know, we're gonna see what we can reduce by, you know, not releasing four of our, our current buses. That will be some savings, maybe that can help a little bit. You know, I think, you know, certainly looking at like the, how many tiers of elementary start times we want, I think, you know, the, the big trade-off that we have to really think about in that decision is, you know, it was done with the primary goal of having the junior high and high school have later start times. If that's still a primary goal, it's gonna mean a trade-off at the elementary level, meaning they have to have earlier start times, which can be challenging for elementary families to, to try and navigate childcare and things like that. And so, you know, with fewer and fewer resources, it's always about balancing priorities. And I think, you know, as an educator, I'd love to be able to come forward to you and say we could do everything we want to do, and I don't think we have that level of resource right now. So, you know, I think that, you know, the, the balance of that too is understanding that as we find other opportunities for reductions, you know, having that balance of the impact on taxpayers and maintaining all of the things that we really believe are good for kids, I think is a consideration that we have to have as well. So I, I, I don't have a clean answer for you on it. Sorry.
Tori? I feel, I just have to say, I feel like I'm an auctioneer here, and I'm getting like eyebrow waves and like finger lifts from the committee, like, I'm gonna talk next, so fifty dollars to Tori.
We'll do paddles at the next meeting.
Exactly.
I, I'm just waiting to see if there's a projectile headed my way because we're done cutting off comment here. I think probably my takeaway at all of the comparable communities, and thank you, by the way, for making sense out of all that DESI data, because I think I've been looking at a similar table and it's just making my head explode, so laying out the categories, that was helpful. I think what it tells me is, one, we're not, again, we're not an outlier. We are doing things pretty normally. We're getting great results. And there are a couple of spaces that look wonky that maybe we should look into, but just from the conversation you and Andrew just had, we don't, we don't have space to do that right now. So how much of this is tucking it in the back of our head and we revisit it once we figure out the current crisis?
You know, I, I think the best part of this, looking at this, is just to gain a perspective over what have been the relative priorities that we've set. Because a budget is a document that sets priorities. And, you know, as, you know, and as much as the priority in the end has to, one of the priorities has to be to balance the budget. The other priorities are for the money that you have, what are you choosing to spend that money on? And I think it's just a good checkup once a year to come back and see how we continue to spend money overall as a district and make sure that where we've prioritized our money aligns with the values. And if we have to make shifts in program services or staffing, we have a perspective of where we've been and thinking about how that might impact what we have to preserve, reduce, shift, things like that.
Lila and then Lakshmi.
I just want to preface this with, I'm not looking for an answer right now, but just thinking about like long-term strategies that we've had in the district or goals that we've had, one of the things that's in the back of my head is, I'm curious what the impact of the A and the B budgets are on this desire to diversify our teacher workforce. I was baffled when I heard that we had one black educator in our entire district, and so I'm just curious, at a later date, if you would be able to share some information about that.
Yeah, I mean, overall, I think what we're seeing is that, you know, in, in a B budget scenario in particular, we will probably have reduced outside of, in special education or English language services, just about every non-professional teacher status educator in the district. So any gains that we've made, you know, in terms of the diversification of the workforce would likely, you know, get reversed if they happened over the last few years. I would also say, though, that there's a, a parallel concern to that, that we've done a lot of professional learning around, you know, mathematics instruction, around, you know, structured literacy and moving away from, you know, a non-phonics-based platform, using the science of reading to guide what we know about literacy instruction. We've done a lot of work around trauma-informed classrooms with our educators over the last several years, making sure that as kids come in, our educators have the tools that they need for, you know, to adapt to that. All of the resources that we've put into growing our teacher force, as we reduce the staff, we'll also go out the door with them. And the great news for the staff is like, acting box brood teachers are marketable everywhere. The bad news is, we've now put a lot of resources into those educators that are benefiting other districts and not ours. And so like, that, that's a piece of the frustration, I think, for all of us on our end of the, the budget piece.
So two questions here. One is for people who say, when our kids went to school, we didn't have these classroom sizes, we did not spend this much per pupil, even though the enrollment is dropping, why are we going, why are we raising more money, the budget is going up? So how do you address that in terms of, as a community, we have chosen a few things to accomplish, and that's what, the cost of that is X, Y, Z. So can, would you be able to, I love the DESI breakdown you gave, but since it goes back only to 2022, I was wondering if you would be able to, for the second question, lay that out with the current projection and at the same time, kind of show that it's not a runaway train, it's, at some point, is going to be manageable?
I might ask you to follow up and make sure I have that clearly, make sure I understand the question. I'm happy to take a look at putting that together.
Okay.
I, I think overall, you know, and I, I thought of this during the ed tech presentation.
Yeah.
When you had asked about, does the use of technology make it easier for educators to spend more time with the kids, right?
Kids, yeah, exactly.
Essentially, what, what I thought of in that moment was that I, I can never think of a time in education where teachers have been asked to do more for the variety of students that they have in classrooms. And for whatever ed tech has brought in to make things easier, it's also significantly increased what a teacher has to do in terms of trying to meet the needs of a variety of different learners in a classroom. And I, you know, we're gonna bring in, try and get some educators together for a small panel for Budget Saturday, you know, just lunchtime questions and answers about what, you know, it's like to be a teacher right now. But I think overall, what we're hearing in the educator workforce, you know, nationally, certainly around the state right now, and even from our own educators, is it's incredibly challenging to work with kids on a daily basis in a classroom. And the, the sense that they continue to try to, you know, learn new strategies, tools, techniques to reach more and more learners, that's why educators got into the profession is to try and reach every student. And our educators, you know, work tirelessly, you know, days, nights, weekends, to make sure that they prepare for classes. And when you feel like you can't meet the needs of the students in the class that you have, and that you see diminishing resources to do that, it becomes increasingly taxing. And I think we're seeing that as an overall trend in education right now, but it certainly is taking a toll on the educators we have. I don't know how I would quantify that in terms of the number of reductions and where and everything else, because I don't think it's gonna be a hard piece of data. I think it's actually more around the soft data, which is, you know, hearing what the educators are thinking, feeling, seeing in front of them with kids, and understanding how different versions of a budget impact that thinking. So maybe follow up with me on an email and clarify that, and I'll see what I can pull together, but I, it might also be, you know, helping our educators tell that story a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Anshin?
I'll speak really fast. I just have a question, well, more like a request. I'm looking at the slides from last meetings. I can't speak anymore, it's after nine o'clock. I, I was wondering if, for Budget Saturday, can we, between now and Budget Saturday, can we look more into the cause of saving in transportation specifically? Like, we were go, we were to go to a two-tier elementary bus route, what would it look like and how much money would save? Because I'm looking at all the structure changes, that's the only one I think that is possible to explore.
Yeah, I mean, I can give you a ballpark right now. If you, you know, take, you know, I think we said that we think a bus costs somewhere about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, all in costs, per bus that we run, right? Sheri and I did that math earlier, and if you have, you know, you, you can reduce five routes, you know, that's, you can do the math out that way. I would think of it in broad strokes around a hundred and fifty thousand. Now, the other variable on that, as I said, was maybe we shift our current drivers to running some more special education routes and lease some smaller vehicles that'll reduce costs. Like, there's, there's a lot of variables at play that I don't think we're gonna be able to put a hard number on early, but might have to be, you know, kind of strategies that we try and see what they do to, to costs over time.
And I, I would just add that it's, it can't just be about the number, because then you're talking about start times again. And that's where it, it gets to be beyond the money, and it's what's the best educational outcome for our kids. And we, you know, we've thought about this a couple times, so have the, the younger kids, have the elementary schools go first. We also know there are a lot of families in the district who rely on having their older kids home first to help with after-school care for the younger kids. So it, it, it is kind of a can of worms, but I, I think as we get to the end of Budget Saturday, it's gonna be some, one of the things that we're gonna have to, to wrestle I want to make a, a quick comment here, and I sort of want to... I want to make a quick comment here, and I sort of want to challenge you, Andrew, on some of this. So I hear you asking for, what can we keep, what can we save? And I think we need to be responsive to the fact that we're asking our community, we're asking one part, one community, to vote actively to increase their taxes significantly, and we're asking another community to take a 15.6% increase in their assessment. I think we need to be asking the opposite question as well, which is, we know that if the A-budget doesn't pass, there's a B-budget, and it decimates it. But if we don't have the support of the Boxborough community, as we've seen in the past, you can have that community vote down a budget, or propose to vote down a budget at annual town meeting. And so I think we need to equally be responsive to a town that doesn't have to go to an override, but still gets to vote our budget. And we need to consider, what if we get a very strong feedback from the Boxborough community, the Finance Committee and Select Board, that says 16%, 15.59%, is untenable for our community? And I say that as a resident of Boxborough, speaking for my constituents, that that, you know, that's a serious thing. So, you know, my ask maybe is, not only do we need to consider where additional savings are to save some of those student-facing things, but what are the additional cuts that we may need to make to actually get an agreement from both communities on a budget that don't affect student-facing services, or whatever it may be? And so, you know, I think that we have, we have to be responsive to our communities, because we need them in the end to vote the budget.
The key word's balance. And it's a balance between the cuts, and the responsibility to the number, and our responsibility to the students, and the charge that we have. And finding ways of being able to maintain the quality of what we put out into our schools, to maintain the quality of the life that we're providing for our children, maintain the continued growth of value in our communities, is a big part of what we're trying to do. It's easy to balance to a number, cut everybody, close a school, turn off the lights at three in the afternoon. We can find ways of being able to drastically get everything under the amount of money possible. But we wouldn't, because of our real purpose for being here, which is to ensure that our children are given the best education they can, and that as families and as people that live in these communities, we're able to grow from that. So the balance that needs to be had is to the responsibility of everyone's pocket, but to the responsibility we have to our children. And I will stand here and say, I want to make sure we have the least amount of cuts possible. But I'm not saying we don't have any. I'm saying, can we get to the least amount, to maintain that balance between the quality of what we're providing through our schools, and the quality of what we need to do for the rest of our lives? We all have to eat, we all have to have power at our house, we all have to do all the things we do. But we're in a really interesting place, the folks in this room, where we are, as you and Victor both said, you're the voices of your constituents. We're the voices of our constituents. And the one group that doesn't have a constituents, that doesn't have a voice here, are the students. And let's just keep in mind that even though we're being responsible to the number, we have to balance that out with what we're giving to them.
Completely agree. I'm gonna be very honest, this is a political process. We're trying to get an override passed, and we're not gonna bring that portion of the community that's on the fence along with us, unless we talk about both sides of that. And so I, I will sit here and ask for every savings and save every person and every teacher that we can, but I also recognize that there are people in this room, in this community, in both communities, who will not support this right now. And I think if we're not showing our willingness to look at, I don't know, I'm not saying I want to go back to the C-budget, but look at what are the next steps, once we get more feedback, then we're actually doing our kids and our students in our community a disservice, because we won't get an override, and then we'll decimate the district. So I think that, I completely agree with you, but I think that we also need to be responsive to those people who have concerns. Because in the end, everyone around this table is here to get an override approved. On April 30th, at town ballot, and then our budget approved on May 6th at the Acton Town Meeting, and on May 13th at the Boxborough Town Meeting. Just want to remind everybody, come vote to both of those, if you're in the town of Acton. Okay. I want to give you an opportunity. Okay. So it is 9:34. We still have members of the public who are with us. Thank you for sticking with us. It's your chance. Please come. If anybody has questions, comments, happy to accept those. We're gonna take about 10 minutes for that.
A quick comment.
And it's too short. Wow. There. Let me introduce myself. I'm Greg Jarboe. I'm the new member of the Finance Committee in Acton. And I'm here tonight to do my due diligence. I have to come up to speed quickly, because I just got appointed in the last two weeks. But I wanted to share with you two observations. One, you are doing your due diligence. I'm impressed. You are wrestling with the hard issues. You make my job a lot easier, because I can listen in. And this is not one where I've got a ferret out of you, data boy, you got data. And so I want to compliment you on wrestling with the hard issues, looking at them with open eyes. For our newbie, for the rookie at this table, I'm impressed. Two, when you look at your comparables, there are a lot of ways to try to figure out who we actually should compare ourselves to. Let me share with you a different perspective. As part of my due diligence and coming up to speed, I've been talking to members of the real estate community, to basically try to answer a really hard question, which is not easy to answer, which is, if the override fails, what is that gonna do to the property values? For people like me, who, yeah, yeah, I had kids that went through the school system, but boy, they went through the school system 15, 20 years ago.
Twenty seconds.
And let me share what the real estate community shared back with me. Nobody moves to Acton to be closer to a Trader Joe's. They move here for the schools. So the reason I'm here tonight is you're the reason people buy homes in this community, and our property values are in your hands.
Thank you. I apologize, I didn't mention before, I'm gonna try and hold speakers to two minutes. Anybody else wish to speak?
I'm Mike Ewing, 93 Hours Street. And I appreciate what you're faced with. However, remember that you're spending other people's money. And it's very easy to live under that umbrella until, until you can't. And so, the goal, as Adam so aptly stated, is to get an override passed. I know you want to spend more money. I know you do, because you've said so before. So, and I'm talking to you, Adam. But you have to live within the same constraints that everybody else does. This is not a "I want" situation. This is "I need" situation. And you need this override to pass, or else it's gonna be pretty devastating. So, keep that in mind as you position that, because that's, that comes across as arrogance. So, you know, you're welcome to your opinion. Obviously, you're a school committee member. You get to say whatever you want to say up there. I just want to, I want to call you on that and just say, you know, this isn't the yellow brick road. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, again. I wanted to agree with Andrew about the fees. I don't think it's, on the athletics side, I don't think it's fair to tell people they're gonna pay 10% more in their taxes and pay more in athletic fees. It's one or the other. Like, if the B-budget, raise the fees, but you can't do both. It's not fair. All-day K, I think by my math, the actual cost is close to $7,000 per student. You could raise it, instead of 500, you could raise it 5,000, and I think you could probably save about 15, 14, 15 teacher positions by doing so. It's crazy that we're providing such highly subsidized daycare to primarily dual-income families. Educational technology is like jumbo shrimp. It is an oxymoron. It is the worst thing to ever happen to the classroom. I do not believe for a minute that the benefits outweigh the negatives, especially in elementary schools. Those kids do not need screens in front of them, period. And in the high school, you could say, like, if they were using them responsibly, maybe there'd be benefit, but a lot of them don't. You know, my daughter was, 10 years ago, in the very first classroom in the district as a fourth grader, when I was informed she was gonna be piloting one-to-one Chromebooks. I was not asked if she could, if we were interested in participating in that pilot. We were informed. The end of the year, no input was sought from parents or families. It was declared a success, and then they rolled them out to all the fourth and fifth graders the next year at Douglas. Three or four, five years later, I got an email from Andrew, in fact, informing that my son was gonna be piloting one-to-one Chromebooks. It's when I made the decision to actually pull my kid out of AB. The technology's not good. Rip it out. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, may I just respond quickly? I'm sorry, no, Ben, we're not making the precedent that we respond to the community. This is their time to talk to us. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Okay. Thank you. Peter, come on back to more cough drops over here, while we go through our subcommittee and member reports. First item on this is the School Committee Communication Goal Update. So, my apologies, we are hosting school committee office hours at both the Sergeant Memorial Library and the Acton Town Hall. And I've not done a good job of publicly informing everybody of that time and when we're available. So, on February, and I will send this out as an email to all towns' boards and committees, and then also to the two local news covering agencies for our two towns. February 1st, February 6th, February 8th, February 13th, February 15th, February 22nd, and 26th, in the afternoon, I forgot the times, I didn't look that up, 2:30 to 3:30, at the Sergeant Memorial Library. We'll be hosting office hours there. And then on February 16th, we're at Acton Town Hall. There are still spots to sign up for committee members, particularly for Acton Town Hall, to have some office hours there. Frequently Asked Questions, I know Andrew's preparing some of those. I think what I'm going to do at this point, and I'm gonna look to Peter, if we have a list of frequently asked questions, can we put that in a document for school committee members to answer? Or is that considered a deliberation, if they're just answering frequently asked questions? We have a list of questions. I need to get answers to these questions, and I want to crowdsource that. Is that considered a deliberation?
I don't know. I'd want to check with our attorney.
Okay.
Because if it's a matter that comes before the committee that you might vote on, it, okay, I just want to make sure we're clear about that. What I do know is if there are frequently asked questions that, you know, a member puts together, and then, or two puts together, and then sends to the administration for fact-checking and additional information to make sure it's accurate, that is not a deliberation.
Okay. All right. I'm just looking for some ways to get that done quickly, so I will pursue that a little bit further. Next item that I have around our school committee communication update is to ask any members of the committee who are available next Tuesday, or this coming Tuesday, January 6th, to join in support of Peter and Sherry as they're speaking to the Boxborough Finance Committee. As I mentioned, the Boxborough Finance Committee has to weigh in on this 15.59% budget increase for them. Unfortunately, I'm out of town. A number of the Boxborough residents have either work commitments, prior appointments, or concerts.
Beginner band.
Exactly. Don't miss out the beginner band concerts, totally worth it. So, please, if anyone's available to join, it is at 7:00 PM in Boxborough Town Hall in the Grange Hall. One last reminder, before I go around to the rest of the committee, there's a ballot vote in Acton on April 30th. Please go there and vote yes for the override to support our budget for our school, and then come to the Acton Town Meeting on May 6th, and the Boxborough Town Meeting on May 13th, to vote yes for the school budget. Members of the town of Boxborough are welcome to join the Acton Town Meeting as a guest, and the vice, the opposite is true for all of our Acton members. Please come to Boxborough, see how we run a town meeting in Boxborough. That is all of the communication goal updates that I have. Does anybody else have any updates from communication things that they're working on? Yan Shin, and then Becca.
Number one, and so, February 6th, Acton Finance Committee also has their meeting at 7:30, which is gonna be interesting. Are we gonna watch the live feed in the Acton Town Hall or not? I don't know. The other thing is that I sent out the sign-up sheet to all the members here. Interestingly, everybody signed up for the Sergeant Memorial Library. It's a great library, but I would like, I jumped through so many hoops to get reservations in the Acton Town Hall. So, if you cannot make those dates, please let me know. I will make other arrangements. I can book rooms in the library for the weekends. I can book more rooms in the town hall for the time that you can do it. But I think we need to show our community that we're there for them, we're there to listen. So please, answer the sign-up sheet.
As of today, I got confirmation that we're gonna have two times at the Acton Senior Center to host listening sessions, Tuesday, March 5th at 1:00 PM, and Tuesday, March 12th at 6:00 PM. I will be there for both. Anyone who can and wants to join me, that would be great. I am trying to figure out how to make a little poll, so I can email you guys and see who might be available. Thanks.
Is it possible we can consolidate the two library volunteer times, so they're in one place?
I think Yan Shin had all the library times in her sign-up sheet. With the Senior Center? Can we add that to the sign-up sheet, Yan Shin?
Do you want me to do that?
No, sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Lakshmi?
I wanted to ask if we, if we're going to consider the virtual ones to, if you to present to the community?
Virtual school committee office hours?
Yeah. It's, I think, helps families who can't really make it to any of the slots.
Yeah, you know, I think what I would say is, we just announced a school committee superintendent coffee that we rescheduled from this week till the 12th of February. I think that can kind of serve. But we can look at, and maybe I'll work with Peter, the problem is that we need access to a district Zoom account to be able to make that happen. Let me talk with Peter and see if we can't find another time, and then I'll see if Yan Shin wants to add that to this. But it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other communication goals updates? Yeah, Leela?
Just quickly, if anyone's watching at around 10 o'clock tonight, my Instagram and Facebook, not my personal ones, my school committee ones, there's a link in my bio with links to the budget website, to all of our agendas, to a ton of other information. And so if you're having a hard time accessing information, you can reach out to me, or you can go to the link in my bio, and it has a whole bunch of wonderful, fun links to explore.
Awesome. Thank you.
Make one note, just, you know, a couple of communication things that I'm working on as well. Obviously, Sherry and I are at Boxborough Finance Committee next week, but then I'm working with John Mangereddy to set up a Java with John, which is time at the Senior Center, to do a Q&amp;A for our seniors, and then also looking at trying to schedule something with Acton TV as kind of a moderated Q&amp;A around the joint, you know, town and school budgets here in Acton, so that hopefully we get some community engagement. So, more to come on that as we schedule it.
Great. Thank you, Peter. And I'll remind everybody that we do have our FY25 budget webpage that we can send people to. I've got that on my email signature. And if members of the public want, wish to, as always, abrsc@abschools.org, email the committee. We get lots of feedback that way, too. All right, moving on to Budget Subcommittee Update. Rebecca?
The Budget Subcommittee met on Monday, January 29th, at 3:30 PM on Zoom, and discussed the most recent ALG meeting, as well as continued planning for Budget Saturday, which will be on the 10th. The line item budget sheets are available for anyone who wants to dig into the nitty-gritty. We are also paying attention to the governor's budget proposal as it works its way through the approval process. the approval process. As of right now, it's not looking promising in terms of transportation reimbursement or Chapter 70 funding. As Adam just said, please continue to reach out via email with any questions or concerns. We will meet again on Monday, the 12th, at 3:30 PM on Zoom.
Keep going.
All right. ALG also met on Monday, January 29th, at 7:30 AM at the Town Hall, and discussed the potential override numbers. The group finally reached consensus on a target number, $6.6 million, in addition to the usual 3% increase in taxes. There are still some details to iron out there. The total is $9.8 million, with an average tax impact of $1,400 per household. The town website, if it's not available now, they are working on adding a calculator, so you can look up what your actual taxes will be. This means the school district will be able to move forward with the A budget plan. The next step in this process, I need to have a consensus from our committee to know that you're in support of this. So if I could just get a thumbs up around the table that everybody's on board with this plan to support the $9.8 million, so that we can go forward with our A budget. Thumbs up? All right. Lexi abstaining from the thumbs up?
I'll abstain, because I would have preferred another budget, too. I really don't like Budget B, but I'm worried about Budget A.
Okay, thank you. So with this, I can go back to ALG, which will meet again on Monday, the 12th, at 7:30 AM at the Town Hall, and I'll let them know that the school committee is supportive of this move.
Thank you. Before I move over to consent items, I just want to very publicly and quickly thank Rebecca for standing in for me at the last meeting. You did an excellent job running a very difficult, long meeting, so thank you for that. Moving on to consent items, so the items on our consent agenda don't require, usually require discussion and are approved with one vote, unless any member would like to hold an item for discussion or separate vote. You know the deal, if you want it held, you say, "Hold." The items are approval of the abrsc meeting minutes from January 18th, 2024, endorsement of a community preservation fund, Open Space Reserves, $51,270, and community preservation, FY25 budgeted reserve, $60,860 for the Blanchard Playground project. And there's a school committee letter that supports that. Those are the two items. Hearing, no holds. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No move. Second.
Okay, so for Beth, who's listening online later, we're going to give that to Liz, and then to Ben. What's that? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The joy of being the chair is you get to decide who made the motion in the second. Statement of warrants, recommendation to approve. Anybody have that statement of warrants available, wish to read the motion?
I do.
Thank you.
I move that the school committee vote to approve the below-listed warrants totaling AP vendor warrants as follows, 24-015A dated January 18th, 2024, in the amount of $440,180.6. 24-015B dated January 25th, 2024, in the amount of $3,468,413.82. Payroll vendor warrant as follows, 24-015PR dated January 25th, 2024, in the amount of $1,223,706.90. Payroll warrant as follows, P2415 dated January 25th, 2024, in the amount of $2,969,351.48. And Arbiter Sports warrant as follows, 24-015AS dated January 25th, 2024, in the amount of $1,934 even. Second.
That kind of sounded like Lila, but I think it was Tori who seconded that one. All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? There are none. Peter doesn't need to highlight anything in the FYI, because the only thing in there is the election calendar, so.
This is not in the FYI, but I just want to, you know, make the committee aware, there's the next round of EPA electric school bus grants coming due. Adam and I just signed a document making, you know, letting EPA Funding Agency know that you have been made aware of our application to that. It's a grant program, so if we're, you know, included, then that would cover the cost of this, you know, we're hoping to do maybe like a one-bus pilot initially, and if it's not approved, there's obviously no cost. So we just want to make sure the committee is aware that we moved that application forward.
Thanks, Peter. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second. I know Ben had the second. Lila had the motion. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. Thank you, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. 9:50.